Good evening. We're so glad to have everybody here at our City Council meeting, May 15th, at 6:00 PM, and would like to have a roll call, please.
Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith? Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Council Mayor Protam?
Here.
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Now, let's all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a citizen's request to address City Council, and that would be for George Turner. Can you please come up? We appreciate having you here.
Thank you for having me. My name is George Turner, and I live at 1514 Vine Street. I used to come to City Council regularly, but then I started going to the Canyon Cowboy Church, and they meet on Monday nights. I am before you this evening to talk about a problem that I consider in this community, and now involves me, and that's homelessness. And several years ago, I had an old house that I rented to an Army vet, and he lived there for a number of years. And finally, then he gathered enough money that he bought his own house, and he moved out. And when he moved out, the homeless people moved in. And they totally just destroyed the house. They graffitied it, and they broke out windows, and ripped off doors, and window frames, and so forth. And finally, I had no option but to tear the house down and get rid of it, with the blessing of the city, by the way. And more recently, they've had homeless people come build their camps in the bottom of the Oil Creek Ditch in the wintertime, when the water is not in the ditch, obviously. And I assume that they build in the bottom of the ditch because it's hidden. And then the last summer, I was going up to one of my head gates, and you have to climb a little embankment and around a very thorny, large bush. And I walked around that and almost stepped in the middle of a guy that was laying there asleep. And he'd set up his camp there behind that bush. And he and his lady were living there. And so I asked them to leave, which they did. And so I've had several instances where people have set up housekeeping on my property. And I had some property that I had a dairy, and it was across the street from where I live presently. And Bill and Melody Tezak came to me one time and wanted to know if they could buy the property, and I sold it to them. And on that property was a house, and a milking parlor, and a 40-by-200-foot strand steel barn. And they wanted that barn to store their sacked, crushed rock in, because when they stored it outside, the ultraviolet light would destroy the plastic and the bags would fall apart. And so they wanted to store it inside. So they bought the property, and they've been there for a number of years now. And they have significant problems with the homeless people on their property. And their major concern is the needles and shringes and stuff that they encounter when they're going through their property and into their sheds and so forth. And but about two weeks ago, I'd been to a Rotary Club Board of Directors meeting out at the Abbey, and I came home and encountered a fellow who'd set up housekeeping on my property. And so I stopped, and we had a little chat. Didn't go well. He got really belligerent, and so I just went home and called the police. And Officer Kanda and Officer Ray showed up. By then, the fellow had left. And but I tried to describe the fellow to them, and they said, "We think we know who that is." And they left. And probably within 10 minutes, Officer Kanda called me back and said, "We've encountered the fellow at 10th and Royal Gorge Boulevard." And they gave him two hours to remove his belongings from my property. Well, the fellow came back, and he did remove it from my property. He moved it across the road and reestablished himself on the edge of the road. And he sat there for a week. Now, there's a lot of people that walk in my neighborhood, on my roads, people that walk, especially the kids and their dogs, and they enjoy it. And so then I was coming home on another occasion, and I encountered a lady opposite this encampment. And so she said she was so pleased to find this pastoral area in Canyon City where she could walk. But she says, "No, I'm not sure that it's safe down here." And I tried to assure her that, yes, it is safe, and so forth. And so after a week, Nicole Martin, who's one of the owners of Colorado Quarries, sent down a crew of three men and a loader and a dumpster, and they filled up the dumpster and hauled it away. Bless their hearts. Anyway, I'm concerned that this is what's happening in Canyon City. We've all seen, I think, pictures of Los Angeles and San Francisco and Denver, Colorado Springs, to some extent, where these people have moved in and just destroyed communities. And I don't want to see that happen to Canyon City, but I'm afraid that we're headed that direction. We've got to figure out some way of controlling these people so it doesn't happen here. And I don't know what you have planned or if you have plans to try and control what's going on with homeless people.
Thank you, George, and thank you for coming today. We actually have had multiple concerns of homelessness. I want you to know that our police department, they work with eradicating problems with homelessness every single day, all day. Our Parks Department work with the problems of homelessness every single day. It is a huge problem that we are tackling constantly, and we are very aware of it. I am meeting with businesses and property owners weekly with our police and often the Homeless Coalition to find out strategies of what we can do for each particular area and the problems that they are having. It's really concerning, because every summer we know that the homelessness population increases in Canyon City, but this summer, already it seems to be more and sooner than normal. And we are very concerned. But I want you to know that we're aware of it, and we are working our best to do what we can. Some of those examples include having the bike patrols that go on the Riverwalk and downtown. We are also searching for ways to get more funding so we can have more police officers do more patrols, because we don't have enough of them to do it right now. We need it 24/7. We also have our Coresponder Program that's going to be going back online soon to help with the mental illness and to really work with the homeless population in particular. We also work with businesses to have agreements that if they're on their private property that we can issue trespasses as often and frequently as necessary. And I really want to put a call of action out to private property owners and businesses that if you have homeless that are on your property, that you need to call the police, to call them and keep calling and calling and calling. Because we can't have our eyes everywhere at all times. We need to know where these trespasses are happening so that we can go and issue those trespasses and let the community out there know that this is not a community that's going to be easy and comfortable for illegal behaviors. There are several other things that we are working on as much as we can. Our hands are tied with the laws of the state of Colorado and with Supreme Court rulings. And so with those issues that we wish that we could prosecute more frequently and maybe be more heavy-handed, we can't do that. But we are looking at every other possible solution we can to work around those laws that are hampering our ability to do that, to do what we can to take care of this. But we, as again, we need a call of action from our community to really help us know where the problems are happening and so we can take care of it. That includes letting us know if you see anybody on the Riverwalk or in an alley or in a public space. We have created laws that they cannot block public rights-of-way or sidewalks with encampments or their belongings, and if there's something of that nature happening, to call our police and let us know, so we can take care of that. There's going to be a lot more that needs to be done. And unfortunately, we are not a unique community. This is across the state of Colorado and across the country. But we are doing our best to keep this a beautiful and pristine community that is safe and welcoming for not just our own residents who live here and want to enjoy a safe atmosphere to live in, but for our tourists that come as well. We're going to have Councilmember Dennehy would like to say something, but I'd also like to invite our police chief, who's here today, to talk a little bit about what he's doing with homelessness as well.
Thank you. Officer Kanda told me the day that he was at my place that he said probably 90% of his calls that day were homeless issues. 90%.
It's overwhelming what our officers are having to do with their time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I was going to bring this up as well tonight, George, whether you did or not, because I got a few calls over the weekend and just some businesses being vandalized. I know that our police department is aware of it. But you know, I want to make sure that, you know, as citizens, some of these happen right, you know, during daylight hours. I mean, 6:00, 7:00 o'clock in the evening. Some happen more in the morning. If you see something that looks suspicious, and you really look at it and you see something, you know, either pull in, take a few extra minutes, pull in, watch. If it looks like something's going on, notify the police department. But you know, we're a community that can help each other. And that's one thing we all have to do, is we have to do our part. I'm not saying inundate the police department with phone calls, because gosh knows, they've got plenty of calls right now. But if we can all just, you know, take an extra five minutes. If you see something suspicious happening, and you just stop and watch it. And if there is something, you know, illegal going on, you know, then call. And if you have the opportunity, stay till the police go, because if the people leave, then the police have nothing. So I'm just saying, as citizens, let's all try to step it up and keep an eye on our community.
Thank you.
We'll go to Councilmember Tracy and then Chief Schick.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and thanks, Mr. Mayor, for attending tonight. I don't have a lot more that I want to add. I just want to thank you, George, for being here and telling us about your experiences and the other comments that were made and the information that Madam Mayor provided. It's important to, maybe a couple of things, reiterate that we are, you know, everything that we do as a city, whether it's police officers or anyone else with the city, we have to follow whatever the law is regarding how homeless folks are handled and whatever case law is. So we do make a huge effort to try to do things appropriately. I think it's important to also note that there are multiple community agencies that are working on this issue, and the city connects with those agencies, whether it's the County Department of Human Services or Loaves and Fishes and others who are volunteers who are working on this. And then I'll just finish by saying that I think we always have to remind ourselves that there, just as any cross-section of the population, there are vast differences from one homeless person to another. There are homeless families that are assisted, for example, by Loaves and Fishes in getting housing. And then we also have at the other end of the spectrum folks who are just committing crimes in the community, and we need to deal with them based on their behaviors and what they do, and that's what we attempt to do. So thank you for raising the issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Tracy. Chief Schick.
Madam Mayor, members of council. Mr. Turner, thank you for bringing this up tonight. It's not only a significant concern to you, sir, it's a significant concern to my department. It's a significant concern to council. I can tell you that the City Council Retreat that was hosted last week, probably a third of that meeting was about homelessness. And where we go from here, how do we get our arms around this issue? It is a balancing act, to say the least. I can tell you this, and you brought up an interesting point. You referenced San Francisco, you referenced Los Angeles, you referenced Colorado Springs. And I can tell you for sure, from Colorado Springs, speaking with the chief in Colorado Springs, and I can tell you, just on reading literature from various police periodicals on responses from LA and San Francisco, they've become passive to this issue because of the laws, because it is, in most estimations, not worth a police response in their estimation. I can tell you that it is not going to be that way here. As long as I run this agency, and I think I speak for everyone up on that council, as long as they're there, we're going to continue to pursue this matter. Now, that doesn't mean we're going to criminalize homelessness. We got to remember that 30%, 40% of these people cause the bulk of the problems. So that's 60%, 70%, six out of seven out of 10, that are just downtrodden. They're doing their very best every day just to survive. And we have to remember that humanitarian side, because our premise is service excellence, but do no harm. That's our goal, every call we go to. So it is definitely a balancing act, but we recognize and feel the significance of your concern. Trust me when I say, this is a call that I visit regularly. I've had four today, before I got to council, before I spoke with the mayor. I'm going down to meet with business owners tomorrow. We're going to continue to pursue this issue, at least to the extent the law will allow us. And if there's a violation, and we can charge somebody on it, we're going to charge them. And if we can't, we're going to try and get them some assistance. The Homeless Coalition has done phenomenal work. It probably is hard to recognize when you see the influx this time of year, but overall, their success pattern has been nothing short of remarkable. I looked at the numbers well before I got here. The average population was in excess of 300, and these are real-time counts by the Coalition. And now we average about 120, 140. So that's a significant reduction. So the work that they're doing is phenomenal. And we're going to continue to partner with them. I can tell you, our calendar's filled with this issue. Commander Bell came to me today and said, "I got six meetings this week on homeless." So we're pursuing every possible path to try and reduce this footprint here in Canyon City. But I can assure you, our response is not going to become passive.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate you being here. Thank you, George, for bringing up a topic that we just definitely needed to have some conversations about. And there will be more conversations coming in the future as we enroll some more tools that we're using to hopefully eradicate homelessness in Canyon City. Any other discussion on this topic for now? Then we're going to move on to Councilmember announcements. Councilmember Tracy.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just, I'll be brief in regard to four different things. The next monthly meeting of the Lincoln Park Cotter Community Advisory Group is tomorrow at 3:00 PM. We've changed our meeting time since we're doing hybrid meetings at the PCC Fremont Campus. It better fits with their schedule, especially as they get into the summer months. So we meet at 3:00 tomorrow, Classroom 129B. We're also on Facebook Live and on Zoom. There's going to be an update from the State Department of Public Health and Environment in regard to site security and other issues out there. An update in regard to the continuing violations of the radioactive materials licensed by the site owner. There will also be updates from the Environmental Protection Agency. And these meetings, of course, are open to the public, and everyone is welcome. I wanted to mention just briefly, I'd sent some information not long ago to council members about an issue that perhaps some folks have read about, an effort from the state of Utah, an operation in the state of Utah to, what they want to do is send heated train cars through Colorado that contain waxy crude, which is, I'm sure there's a better name for it than that. But there have been communities in the northern part of the state who have been working to fight that issue, particularly enlisting federal agencies and elected officials. But there are also others. I've been in touch with someone involved with Friends of Brown Canyon, Browns Canyon, which is between Salida and BV, as you know. And also just saw, in the last day or two, a letter was sent by Chaffee County Commissioners to federal representatives and agencies expressing concern about the possibility, not only the possibility that someday the Tennessee Pass line that runs through here could possibly reopen, but just in general, the possibility that those train cars could come through Colorado on a northern route. So just wanted to alert you to the fact that those discussions continue and that there are elected officials in some parts, or many parts of the state, who are working on that. Want to mention briefly that I sat in on another Public Utilities Commission public comment hearing today, which has been continued again. They're really working to try to get public comment, but mostly they're getting discussion among attorneys who work for the utility companies. But this particular issue, the hearing is about rule change regarding disconnections. And this is both electric and gas utilities. So it's ongoing. Their next hearing is in July. Just wanted to let you know that there are some important changes there and a lot of discussion about whether remote disconnections will continue to be allowed. I'm kind of sensing that they might be, and that's something that our utility has done, because they have smart meters. And then fourth, mention that the city's Energy Advisory Committee meets again on Monday here at 10:00 AM, and the public is welcome to that. It's also online, if you'd like to participate that way. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of things. Number one, we have, we had a Vision Committee meeting scheduled for this Wednesday, and that meeting has been canceled. In addition, one of the things that, one of the boards or commissions that I sit on to represent the city is the County Planning Commission. And the county has been looking at revising their zoning regulations and development regulations, just as Canyon City did a couple of years ago. They have received a grant for that. The grant is to review those regulations, zoning and development regulations, with an eye towards encouraging affordable housing. That's a grant from the state of Colorado, and so the county is making use of that and will be looking at their regulations through that lens, which is interesting. They, the last Planning Commission meeting, there was a brief 15-minute presentation at the beginning of the meeting. That can be found online at the county site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Now, Vision Committee is canceled for this Wednesday, but there still is an executive session. Is that at 5:00 PM?
That is at 5:00 PM, yes, ma'am.
And that is, can we stay with that vision, the executive session?
To receive the opinion of...
Of our attorneys concerning a potential contract. Reiterate that at these executive sessions, we have attorney-client privileges that need to be discussed, but no decisions are ever made in an executive session. That will always come back to a public meeting for public comments and decision-making. Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to give a shout-out to the Parks Department. They had to make a really tough call this weekend with canceling the Zia races up at the gorge. I think it was absolutely the right decision, given the condition, given all of the rain, and certainly was protective of our trails and making sure that they are there for our long-term enjoyment and use. But I know that that's always a difficult decision to make when so much time and effort and planning has gone into those sorts of races, and you have a lot of folks who are excited about participating in them. So I just wanted to recognize the Parks Department and the work that they did in making that calculation and making a decision that was in the best interest of our community.
Thank you. I'll be sure to pass that along.
Yeah, it was sad that incredible rain that we desperately needed to soak into our ground and see Canyon City green up, that it actually, that had a negative impact for the Zia rides. We really love having them here. And now it is time to have a new officer introduction. So Chief, I'd like to invite you back up, and our new officer.
Go on up, Jim. He's hiding out back there. Just a new initiative, Madam Mayor, members of council. I think it's important to establish this relationship pretty early on, and I know the council never misses an opportunity to express their gratitude and appreciation for their law enforcement officers. So I wanted to recognize Officer Jim Gary and, unable to be with us this evening, Officer Selena Bradshaw, which, there she is. I put a picture of her up, so you can get a good look at her face. So Officer Gary is, he is prior Air Force, and he is a little older than our normal recruit, just a little bit. But I brought Jim on for a variety of reasons. Number one, his intelligence level, his heart, his maturity. He brings capacity right away to the office, and we saw that real early on. Interestingly enough, fun fact, Jim's son, Chad, works for our police department. So I'm told this is our first father-son duo. So we're awfully glad to have him and have him here with his son, serving in their role. Selena also brought some capacity, very, very striking young lady. She put herself through the mini-academy, the postmini-academy, prior to coming to us. She comes from North Carolina, another East Coast cop. She was there for about four, five years, and she came out here with her husband, who serves in the military. And we're just real happy to have both of them on board. They're both, you know, in line with our mission. They strive for service excellence every day and just helping people and genuinely making Canyon a better place. So Jim and Selena.
Welcome to the team, Officer Gary and Bradshaw. We're really proud and honored to have you join the team and really grateful to have you serving Canyon City.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, it's awesome that you get to be with your son. Do you have anything you want to say?
I appreciate the opportunity at my given stage of life to be able to continue to give, and that's the main thing that I want to do, try to mentor some of the younger folks, not necessarily in the police work, because I have very little experience with that, but in just the life experience that I can maybe pass on.
He's full of humility also.
It was wonderful to have your wisdom and experience, so thank you again. Chief, let's go ahead and move on to Police Week. We have a proclamation.
Yes, ma'am. Am I sitting or standing?
Come on up and just stand at the microphone.
Okay. In case.
Do you have anything that you want to say before we do the proclamation?
It's a very special time of year for us. This is a week that we honor those officers that have given the ultimate sacrifice. And unfortunately, this year, once again, we've seen over 200 of them put their names on the wall, had the opportunity to, you know, watch the vigil before in person. And it's a touching tribute. And it's been said, no greater sacrifice it's, it's, it's a touching tribute, and it's been said, no greater sacrifice can be made than a man lay down his life for his cause, so, I, very important time. You'll see all of our officers have their badges shrouded this week, we'll keep them that way for the entire week, just to show our respect.
Thank you, Chief. And Police Week, it, it does honor the brave officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty with their loss of life, but also recognize that our officers every day risk their lives to keep our streets, our trails, our parks and neighborhoods and businesses safe. Our police officers are the backbone of our community, and they work tirelessly to prevent crime, solve cases, eradicate illegal drugs, save lives, which we've had many save lives here in Canyon City, mitigate the impacts of homelessness every single day in Canyon City, provide security for special events like the Blossom Festival and Whitewater Festival, we really appreciate your presence at both of those and other community events as well. You raise money to provide Christmas for underprivileged children in our community and create opportunities for positive interactions with our police officers, and put yourself in harm's way every single day to protect our families and our property. Just want to make sure that you get the deserved thanks and utmost respect and gratitude as we honor each of you for your dedication and sacrifice. I'd like to encourage all of our citizens to take an opportunity this week to say thank you to our officers for their service and show that their appreciation for all that you do.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
With that?
Encourage them just to talk to them.
Absolutely, have great conversations with them, and I really appreciate that this is a community that does support our men and women in blue.
Overwhelmingly.
And we can go buy them a donut.
I'm sorry?
Everybody buy them a donut this week.
This week is the week to do it.
Power rings, we feel better about ourselves, we call them power rings.
Oh, excuse me.
Power rings, all the way. We do have a proclamation that we would like to read in honor of our officers for Police Week, and we'll start this time, I guess with Councilmember Schmisher, if you don't mind, we'll each take a paragraph.
Office of the Mayor Proclamation, Police Week, May 14th to the 20th, 2023. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated National Police Week annually since 1962, and?
Whereas the members of the Canyon City Police Department and other local, state, and national law enforcement agencies play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of their citizens, and?
Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their law enforcement agencies, and that members of these departments recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting against violence and disorder, by protecting against, by protecting the innocent against deception, oppression, and intimidation, and continually operating in the spirit of, in the spirit of service excellence, and?
Whereas the members of Canyon City Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service.
Now therefore, I Ashley Smith, Mayor of the City of Canyon City, do hereby proclaim the week of May 14th through 20th, 2023, as Police Week. In the City of Canyon City, Colorado, and urge all citizens of the City of Canyon City and all patriotic civic and educational organizations to honor the men and women of Colorado who play a critical role in the protection and preservation of life and property with appropriate ceremonies. In which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their duty have rendered dedicated service to our community, and in so doing have established for themselves an viable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights, safety, and security of all.
All citizens of the City of Canyon City and all patriotic civic and educational organizations are further called upon to observe Sunday, May 14th, just passed, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or been seriously injured in the line of duty. And 2021 numbers that we have here that we can update, 601 peace officers were killed in the line of duty in the United States in 2021, including nine in Colorado.
The City of Canyon City recognizes and honors its police officers for their service and sacrifice, dated 15th day of May, 2013, Ashley Smith, Mayor.
Thank you, a round of applause for our police officers, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Chief. We have another proclamation to give for other employees of the City of Canyon City that provide really, really important work for Canyon City. Leo Evans, do you want to go ahead and come forward? We also have some of our department heads, want to recognize that Travis Payne is here and Jim Johnson as well, that work in Public Works, and that we have some special things to say about you as well.
Good evening, thank you for having us. The week of May 21st through May 27th is Public Works Week, and we wanted to take a moment to acknowledge all the hardworking men and women that fulfill your Public Works Department here in the city. They are dedicated public servants that go above and beyond every day to do all the simple things that often get taken for granted in a city. You know, just the, the amount of effort that it takes to take water from the Arkansas River and deliver it to, you know, 17,000 residents in a pure drinkable form, maintain your parks, maintain the 150 vehicles in the fleet, you know, make sure our, all our tax dollars are spent well through capital programs. All those things take a lot of work and they don't always draw the attention that they deserve, so we wanted to take a moment and just acknowledge all those hardworking people that fill out the Public Works Department.
Absolutely, we really thank each and every one of you in your department. I also just want to take a moment to acknowledge the tireless effort of the Public Works employees who work behind the scenes, as you said, that is often not in the limelight, but they keep our community running smoothly. They work diligently every day to maintain our infrastructure, including filling potholes by the thousands, fixing streets, keeping our parks pristine, a well-groomed cemetery, beautiful trails, well-maintained public facilities, keeping our vehicles operable and delicious water system and stormwater services. These employees play a critical role in ensuring that our community remains functional and livable, they work long hours by day and through the night, often in challenging conditions. I'm incredibly grateful for the hard work and dedication of our Public Works employees, their contributions to our community often go unrecognized, but their importance in keeping our community running smoothly cannot be overstated, so grand thanks to each and every one of our employees. And for you being their leader, we're really grateful to have you here in Canyon City, it's been awesome having you here so far.
Thank you.
And we do have a wonderful proclamation to read, and we'll start again with Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Office of the Mayor Proclamation, National Public Works Week, Connecting the World Through Public Works, May 21st to 27th, 2023. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Canyon City, Colorado, and?
Whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our city's transportation, water supply, water treatment, parks, fleet, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and?
Whereas it is in the public interest for the civic leaders, residents, and visitors in Canyon City, Colorado, to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works in their respective communities, and?
Whereas, excuse me, the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Be it now?
Resolve that I, Mayor Ashley Smith, do hereby designate the week of May 21st through 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week. I invite all citizens to pay tribute to our public works employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Thank you again, and please a round of applause to all of our citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ryan Stevens, City Administrator, we're ready for you to give us a report on our consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on May 1st, the general government meeting on May 3rd, and the special meeting, which was the Clock Tower Plaza Open House on April 27th. 8B is to award bid 2423 for data management to 120 Water for the amount of $40,000. 8C is to award bid 5023, three 2023 Chevrolet Colorado four-by-four work trucks to Daniel's Long Chevrolet, in an amount not to exceed $104,985. 8D authorizes the purchase of a police department K-9 and training services with first response K-9, in an amount not to exceed $6,800. 8E authorizes the city administrator to sign a contract with Pyramid Construction for Rhodes Avenue, it's full-depth reclamation, in an amount not to exceed $10,000. 8F authorizes the mayor to sign a purchase agreement for 17 acres on Skyline Drive property, in an amount not to exceed $34,000. 8G, receive and file a monthly budget summary for March of 2023, and 8H is to receive and file cash disbursements and P-cards.
Thank you. We do have some department heads that have, I just wanted to invite you if you have something you'd like to address City Council for, I know we might have some questions, Travis, about the item B, that's the data management of the 120 Water contract.
So this is for some consulting help for complying with EPA's version of lead and copper rule. So as a reminder, the, kind of the heavy lifting on this is going to be doing the water service line inventory, because the new kind of stipulations that are put on this are that we have to inventory every single service line on the customer's side, which we've never done before, we don't have any, any records for that sort of thing, we have spotty records for our side, we know that there's very little, if, if not any, lead on our side of, of the service line, but on the customer's side of the service line, we have no idea. So for over 8,000 service connections, that's a really heavy lift for us, if not impossible. So 120 Water is a consulting firm that kind of comes in and, and they do this for hundreds of other, other entities throughout the nation, so they, they know what they're doing very well, and they're going to help us out on this.
Mayor Potem Hamrick.
Thank you, the, I do have a couple of questions about the contract, but first, I noticed in the discussion of this particular item that we're looking at 5,000 mailers for to our customers that would give people who respond a $20 credit on their water bill. And what, what, what information do we expect to get from the mailers?
So the information that we hope to get would be what service line material is actually poking through their cellar or, or right outside their house, you know, what, what their side, meaning pass the water meter to the house, what that water service line material is, whether it's lead, non-lead, or galvanized, that would be the information we need.
The, on, on that particular item, the, you know, I, most homeowners are not going to know what, what we're talking about, really, but what we're talking about is from the city's water meter, where we hook to a particular house, and that's the line going into the house, and then is distributed within, within that particular house. And the, I, I would suggest that if we, if we really want to get good data here, that we include some type of certification, that the, that the responding citizen has looked in their water pit to see, to actually visually examine the line coming out of the meter to their house, to see if they can determine what the, what the construction is, what the materials of construction are. But, but otherwise, you know, there, I really don't think that, you know, unless we include something like that, I'm not sure that we're going to get the information that we would hope, because most people probably don't know and probably could say, oh, it's this or that, without really, without really knowing or verifying. And so I would suggest some type of, if we're going to give $20 off on a water bill, that we include a certification statement, that the, that the individual citizen has taken some action in, in terms of inspecting or reviewing what, what those materials might be.
Understood, and there will be a public education component that comes out before the mailers go out to kind of help out with some of that stuff, but understood about the certification.
Councilmember Tracy, and then Dennehy.
I, I guess my question was pretty similar to what Councilmember Hamrick just mentioned, that we'd want to be sure that we're getting useful information, and, you know, I, I would assume that means not only good education for the customers ahead of time before the survey, but also just some very specific instructions about what they are supposed to do if they want to try to self-determine what that material is. I don't know if you want to say a little bit more about what that might look like, what that process would be for a customer?
Well, it actually might be a fantastic time, we have Eric Michnik with us from 120 Water, he's on, on the interwebs there, and he might be able to answer that a little bit better.
Absolutely, thank you, Travis. Thank you all for allowing me time here to speak, so, I don't know why my picture is not coming up here, but, so as those mailers go out, we're going to have instructions on exactly what the resident needs to do as, as part of this project. We also have the capability where with using the mailer, they can use a QR code or a link that goes to the survey online, they can fill that online, they can take pictures, and they can also email pictures to us as well if they want to fill it out by hand and send it in, but we are available as well via phone call, so if they have any questions on what type, of what they might be looking at, or any, any questions that they have about that survey process, they can give us a call and we'll be more than happy to walk them through that. We ask that they do take pictures if at all possible, and our team will go through those pictures, and if they can perform simple scratch tests and things like that, that helps to get more information as well, so our team will be there to kind of quality control that information as, as it comes in, so that we can make sure that we're getting accurate data on everything with that, and like Travis mentioned, you know, the public outreach campaigns and everything like that will help build, you know, the, so the residents understand that ultimately this is a project that the EPA and CDPHE have rolled out for their health, so that the more help that we can get from the community, the safer we can make the community in general.
So just a quick follow-up to that, are we envisioning it correctly at this early point that it would involve a customer opening up a meter pit, or is there something closer to the house that they would be looking at?
So it would not be them opening up their meter pit?
Thank you, good.
Because typically, well, they're, they're not supposed to open up their meter pit, A, and B, we generally do lead, or not lead, sorry, copper that goes out of the meter pit for two feet on each direction, it kind of acts as a meter set, so the meter's kind of firm there, it's not wobbling around. So if it was as simple as opening up the meter pit, we would be able to do that, but it's not, so generally, and Eric can correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, it's what's poking through their foundation, so if they can take a picture of that, then, you know, that's, that's a lot more valuable to us.
So it might be in a basement or a crawl space?
Correct.
Wherever that service line comes into the?
You got it, and then part of it too is if they're not sure, then, you know, they'd be able to reach out to us and we can go help them with that, you know.
Thank you.
So next we have Councilmember Dennehy, and then Councilmember Schmisher.
And, and I'm good, because that was my next question, is the place it has to be as right as it comes into the house, I mean, and, and, you know, and then some people, that's tough, because their call saves isn't that, but, but that was answered, so thank you.
My question was largely answered as well, I do wonder if Eric could share a bit more about the accuracy or reliability that they've noticed in other communities from these types of surveys, given that they have so much experience doing this type of work around the nation and around the state of Colorado.
Absolutely, so every, every, you know, community is, is different, but, you know, we have gotten very good response rates, we've actually also, with the pictures, it's made it, you know, very accurate as far as what we're looking at, and we do also have, you know, if there's some, some questions about what it might be, it, those surveys are also a great time where then we can give follow-up, so, you know, people that fill those out, typically they're saying, if, you know, if you have any questions on what I filled out, go ahead and give me a call, so at that point, we do have some options as well, if we're, if we're looking at like a photo and we're not really sure what that is, we could either, you know, have someone from Travis's team go out there and take a look, or we could send something like a 3M lead check swap kit to that resident, where it's a pen essentially, where you mark, you put it on the pipe, and then you put it onto a piece of paper, if it turns red, it's going to be lead, if it turns yellow, then it's not, and then that gives you confirmation for sure, so that everyone can be 100% sure if that's a lead line or not. So we've had really good success with, with using these surveys throughout the United States to get accurate information and to, you know, States to get accurate information and to, you know, it's a, a way to get a lot more data at scale for a, a cheaper price point than a lot of other means.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Hamrick.
Thank you. The, if I'm looking at page, let's see, what page am I on here? Page 64 and page 65 of the information that 120 Water provided us, what that, what that shows me is that our year one cost is 23, $23,000 and change. Year two is $24,000 and change. But we're asking, the, the request is for $40,000. Where does the other money go to?
So I think I, so some of that's going to be digitizing some of our written records that comes at a cost. So the, the year one and year two costs are largely for the consulting work that they're doing, but there is, there was some other line items put out on the bid schedule. So one of them being the mailers, you know, that was a price per mailer. There's also some for like lab services. There was a price per, per kit, you know, so, you know, the year one does not include those other line items like the mailers. That was, you know, a separate cost or an additional cost because 120 Water or any, any firm would not know how many to send out. We would request that.
The, and, and we'll, we'll, we'll get back to that in a second, but, but essentially in the draft contract that we have, our Exhibit A, Scope of Services, where we generally see those callouts as, as not included, was not included in my packet. And I would, I, you know, I think it's important that we see those documents as we're being asked to make a decision. $40,000, I understand there are some specific things we're going to be getting. On the, the, the contract itself, one comment there, but under, on page 72, under Section Five Ownership, where we talk about ownership of data, and what we're saying there is that basically any data that is developed as a result of this contract is owned by the city. Okay? And that's good. That's, that's absolutely an essential. But the, it does not restrict 120 Water in any way from how they use that data. And it seems to me that that is a, perhaps it could be a vital city interest, at least a city interest of how any data about our water system is used by this company. So it seems to me there needs to be a clause in there talking about use of data and how that, and how we expect that to shake out. And then going back to the, to the schedule again on page 64, I note that if we sent out 5,000 sampling kits for lead, lead and copper compliance kits with shipping, that's the first call that item as needed. That's $173,000 if we sent them out to the 5,000 people that we expect to respond to our survey. And you can go down that list and all of a sudden, things are getting really, really big. And so I just note that, I'm sure that you've got, you've got a handle on what we're going to be ordering and, and how much and things like that, but the, it, it seems to me to be, you know, we have heard in the past about this issue that we could be looking at astronomical costs. And I think that we just need to, you know, we, right now, we're being asked for $40,000, fine, but I, but I think that we need to have some idea of what those other costs could be. And I have one other, one other point I'd like to make. And on, on page, now I'm on page 30 of our, of our, the materials that we have, and we're talking about the qualifications and experience of, of 120 Water. And we're talking about getting our location data into their programs. And this, this is a general comment, something to, to think about, but in, in my experience, companies that can take your data and return your data to you in a usable form by other programs are good companies. Companies that take your data and put it into their database, which is proprietary, are not so good companies. And I would hope that whatever we end up with here, if we're going to a major database approach, that what we get back in terms of data, or reports on locations, things like that, those, those should be ArcGIS compatible. And that should be an ask that we make. And I realize we're going to be going down, this is not, this is only a first step. We're, we're going to be, this is going to be something that we talk about, I think, in the future quite a bit. But it seems to me that, that the data that we put into their system should be able to be returned to us in a system that we can use independent of theirs. And thank you, Madam Mayor, those are my comments.
I was wondering if Eric had any comments as far as the dat- data protection or sharing?
Yeah, so absolutely, we can get data back into ArcGIS. We actually have a connection built with ESRI for ArcGIS so that we can grab information from there and then also push it back in. And Travis was, you know, from the, from the start, he was, he absolutely made sure that that was something that we were able to do. And it, it's really a standard practice for us to get that information back to the municipality, you know, in their GIS system, so that ultimately it can live there long-term, absolutely.
Thank you, Eric. The, I would just, I would just comment, I did go through the, the statement of qualifications that you provided us. I did see the push down, the grabbing it from ESRI in, mentioned in there, but I did not see the pushback in, in your statement of qualification. I might have missed it, but that's just a comment for you.
Okay.
And I, I have a question probably for both Eric and Travis. And just want to reiterate that this is impending regulation that is going to be required by the EPA for us to gather this information about the water lines, if they have lead or not, and have that documented. But I, I guess my question is, is that it's impending, we, we know it's coming, but it hasn't been formalized or finalized. Why is there an urgency to start gathering this information now and what's that value for that?
So it has been finalized with EPA. They have put out their rule, but CDPHE, Colorado Department of Health and Environment has primacy over that rule. So they have the ability to either accept that rule as is or come up with a stricter version of it. They can't be any more lenient, but they can be more strict because they have primacy. So we know that the rule has been formalized and what it, what it could be. Colorado has said that they're going to put out their version by quarter four of this year, but you know, as I said before, with, you know, more than 8,000 service connections, I mean, we're not going to be able to do that in nine months. We have to get started now. So enable, to be able to get the job done, we just, we need that timeframe. We need the additional year of, of gathering data. And we're going to need that data one way or another. It's just kind of some more of the small details of how Colorado is going to choose to implement their version of the rule. So EPA has finalized their rule.
Thank you.
And we have until October of 24 to get it in.
I think it's important that the public knows this. Eric, do you have anything to add?
No, I, I think Travis hit that right on the, right on the head there, that, yeah. So it was implemented by the EPA, just to reiterate that. So that's definitely something we're working towards is that October 16th of 2024 date.
Yeah, and this is yet another unfunded mandate, and it's a really big ticket item of an unfunded mandate that we're going to have to comply with.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's going to be a lot more to this in coming years because, I mean, if we do identify lead service lines, then we're going to have to talk about how to get those out.
And Madam Mayor, I just add that one of the reasons we can get started now is because we do know the minimums. We don't know what Colorado was going to add, what additions may be there, which could cause some, you know, inefficiencies in data gathering, because when you go out to get data and you didn't know to ask the question that Colorado wanted, that could be, that could cause some additional costs or marginal costs, but, but we do know the minimums.
And, and I would, would just like to add that we have been attending the stakeholder meetings that the state has been putting on, and so far, I mean, they're not, they're not proposing anything that's, that's wild and crazy. I mean, it's largely going to be what the EPA has, has already finalized.
All right, thank you. Thank you for being here and thank you Eric for also being here to address further questions. Appreciate it.
Mayor Potem, if I may, just jump in just to address what you were speaking of for the ESRI data. Travis and I and Eric, we all met and went through that exact situation multiple times. So I wanted to make sure that it was pointed out that that is in the agreement on Section Nine under Termination, Nine B. We made sure to include language in there that at termination of this agreement, 120 Water shall return our data in a format compatible with the city's ESRI GIS.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you Elijah, we appreciate that. We're glad you're here tonight as well. Okay, very good. I would like to invite Chief up. I think there might be some further clarification we need about the canine training and services that are happening and why we need to go this route.
Yes, ma'am.
So the law was passed by the vote of the people to legalize psychedelic mushrooms?
Mushrooms, yes, ma'am.
And that had an effect on our canine program? Can you please elaborate for the, for the benefit of the public?
Yes, ma'am. The, the impact was significant. It, it cost us our two patrol certified canines in whole or in part based on that, that legislative act. We had the consideration to try and re-imprint the dogs in my exploits to try and determine if that's a viable option, if it's a good investment for the city to try and re-train the dogs not to alert on something they were previously trained to alert on. My contacts, master canine trainers, one of them, Chief Fresquez, is with us tonight, emphatically told me, no, it's, it's not doable. And the best analogy I think I, I heard from a contact of mine was imagine us trying to reteach you not to know the alphabet, to forget the alphabet. So we decided to retire both canines with their handlers and we are pursuing a new pursuit with a new canine, preferably through Chief Fresquez's private business. He's been a veteran canine trainer for some time in Center, Colorado. He and I met some time ago at the chief's conference and we were talking about the potential, the, the possible legislation that was coming down. And we continued those conversations thereafter. And he is very kindly, out of a relationship that he has with Kennels in North Care, excuse me, North Carolina, came across a rehab dog that's quite young, that was put with a inexperienced handler, and they decided to return the dog. That dog was provided to Chief Fresquez of no charge other than the shipment cost. And he's offered that dog or another dog, one of his dogs, they have several in Center, one of his dogs to come and replace that if we, if we choose that. So I've had my handler, new handler, brand new handler, Officer Zach Frye, go down and work with Bingo. That's the dog that we are intending on getting, and so far, so good, but he hadn't, he hadn't got a chance to spend a whole lot of time with him. And Chief Fresquez and his agents have been holding and working with Bingo with their other dogs in the interim. So we're pretty close to, to getting him down there. Staffing shortages have required us to only be able to send him down there one day at a week. Pretty soon that, those numbers are going to square up and we're going to be able to send him for almost a full week. So it'd be six or eight weeks to get them both fully certified.
Excellent. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks so much, Chief Schick, that's really exciting news.
Yes, ma'am.
And thanks so much as well to the chief from Center. I did have one process question and then one question about canine training. Process question, I did wonder about the process that we went through, given that it is over the $6,500 threshold for competition. Obviously, there's a significant cost savings if the dog is at no cost, and I'm assuming that played a key factor or a key role in, in the decision-making to not have a competitive process around this. But if you could speak a bit to that, because it is against the process that we normally follow, that would be great.
Yeah. This kind of falls into professional services. Trying to find a, trying to find a canine animal, it doesn't typically follow the, the typical bid process, just in general. So we're, we're waiving, you made the decision to waive that, that bid process for obviously a very, a very good deal here.
Okay. So given the unique nature of the procurement and given the significant cost savings, given that the dog is at no cost other than shipping.
It's the best interest of the city.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yes, and equitable trade with another potential vendor, this would probably cost in excess of $20,000.
Thank you. So the, the dog is going to be free to the city, the $6,800 is for the training that's happening.
Six thousand for the training and 800 for shipping.
800 for the travel, shipping, yes.
I, I want to thank Chief Fresquez for, for being here virtually and just would like to invite Chief Fresquez if he has any comments that he'd like to make.
Aaron, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I would just like to thank you guys for the opportunity. I, I look forward to it. You guys are going to be getting a, a great dog. He's showing great potential and everything already. And I just, I look forward to having you guys come down and, and go that route. I mean, I can answer any questions that you guys want. Like Chief said, typically, we're just going to donate that dog to you guys. I could potentially turn it around and, and sell it. And if you guys looked into other vendors and stuff like that, Chief was right, it's, it's anywhere from 20,000 to maybe 30,000. And, and I, I started off as a small, or I am a small agency. We had no dogs. I raised the money myself to get my first dog. So I know how hard it is and that was the idea for, for us, was to just kind of cut down some costs, so.
Thank you, Chief, for looking forward to a successful partnership. We appreciate it greatly. We were really saddened when we had to say goodbye to our canines, a really important part of our CCPD team, and we're glad to have an opportunity to get our canine program back up and going.
I'm pretty confident moving forward, and I, I guess I should knock on wood, that the, the four substances the dogs trained on to alert are pretty safe of legislative threat in cocaine, meth, heroin, and fentanyl. So.
Excellent.
The other question was actually about that. I had heard that there are some agencies out of Wyoming that are having some success training canines on fentanyl. And I was wondering if Chief Fresquez or yourself had any further insight on that or if that's something that, that agencies in Colorado are also starting to look at?
Well, I know it's, it's a concern for us and, you know, given our, our latest arrest, I spoke with Chief Fresquez this afternoon and, and he absolutely assured me that we could train Bingo or any other dog on the synthetic fentanyl that they utilize through Syntex. Chief, Aaron, you want to, you want to talk a little bit on that?
Yeah, so I actually, on both my narcotics dogs for my agency, we, we have imprinted them already on fentanyl. Now, it's a Sentlogics product, so it, it's a product that gives the similar reaction, I guess, to the, the sense of smell for the canines and stuff like that without actually having to use the real stuff. Me and Chief talked about it earlier and I won't train with the real stuff just because of the amount of danger that could happen with fentanyl. But I definitely can imprint whatever dog you guys choose at that point, I can imprint them on fentanyl without a problem. And it is, I can say that it works because our canine that we, or two canines that we put on, but one of them we used the other night on a traffic stop and we did find fentanyl. So I know the Sentlogics product works. And so I look forward to actually doing that if that's something you guys request.
That's fantastic to hear about the success of, of your animal and that traffic stop. Thank you. you so much for sharing that.
All right. Well, well done. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time here. Are there any other questions on the consent agenda? Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Yes, the one on the full-depth reclamation for Rhodes Avenue. I know that when we were discussing 2A, that was something that was looked at pretty hard by the city. And Leo, do you have any experience with full-depth reclamation?
I do. I have some in my previous roles. This one will be a little different than the one we're using on Reynolds Avenue this year, which is a City 2A full-depth reclamation project. The work on Rhodes was covered in an intergovernmental agreement, primarily between the city and the Sand District, mostly to split costs. We also had the county involved, as it's their road, and they were going to provide some manpower and equipment for the paving, but the bulk of the cost and work was between city and Sand District. We were reviewing the site, getting ready to work on it, and all three parties were there, and we looked at it and decided that it would be a good candidate to do a FDR on, and it's actually going to be quite a bit cheaper than the alternative. So, or at least cheaper in terms of cost opportunity, kind of thing, because we don't have to tie our crews and their crews up with all the prep work for it. So--
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Leo. I know that the residents on Rhodes are really anxious to have this work done, and we're glad to see that this is going to be happening for them.
Us too.
Councilmember Tracy, and then Councilmember Schmisher.
I have just a small question in regard to Item 8G. On the very last page, which is Page 128 in our electronic packet, I just didn't know, and I didn't see this earlier, I didn't know if there was a wording problem with the heading where it says Sales Tax Collections, Water Operating Revenue. Is it just Water Operating Revenue?
It should just be Water Operating Revenue, yes.
All right. Just wanted to verify. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was wondering if there was a projected timeline for completion of the FDR, and how that switch might impact that timetable.
Right now, we're waiting to get on the schedule with the county. So, the county Streets Department will be providing the paver and the manpower to pave. The city and the Sand District will deliver the asphalt. The county, the last time we checked, was finishing up their chip seal program and expected, like, the first week of June to kind of have an opportunity to do the paving. So, with the FDR being approved tonight, we would look to schedule that, you know, just a couple days in advance of when the paving can occur. So, hopefully, first week, second week of June will be our timeframe for that.
Thank you so much. That's really exciting.
Great. Ryan, just for the benefit of the public again, can you please give further enlightenment on Item F, for the reason why Canyon City has an interest in obtaining 17 acres of the Skyline Drive property?
Sure. Yeah, as part of the city's comprehensive plan, Picture Canyon City 2020, one of our initiatives is to look at priority annexation areas and bring some of those lands that are in the county into the city. This is an opportunity for us to acquire this land, incorporate it into the existing city-owned land that is already out there. We also have some jurisdictional issues that we run into between the Police Department and the Fremont County Sheriff's Office, although some of those issues have been resolved with our IGA. But, you know, it's about who responds in which cases and those types of things. And then, another reason for the city acquiring this land is to make sure that we still, we can maintain the pristine view of Skyline Drive, and, you know, we don't necessarily want private owners going and contracting with cell tower vendors and things like that, that may obstruct views, or, you know, turn Skyline Drive into a communications hill.
Thank you for that. If there's no other further questions, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda and agenda as written.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? A call vote, please.
Counsel-- pardon me. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Councilmember Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Hi.
Thank you, Council, and thank you, staff, for your help in getting through the consent agenda. Ryan, would you have an administrator's report?
Do. You have the written report in your packet. I know we still have three presentations tonight, so in the interest of time, I'm happy to take any questions. One additional item that's not in the report that I do want to highlight is the Water Committee. Their first meeting is scheduled for May 31st at 2:00 PM. I know that Councilmembers Tracy and Stein expressed interest in attending those meetings, so we will be posting those meetings as public city council meetings.
Thank you. Any further questions for Ryan at this time? Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Just a suggestion. On the administrator's report, especially in the tables that we have, we have a table for Public Works Update, some information tables, but those are fine. But, like, on planning and zoning, if, when there's, some of these are long-term projects and get carried over from report to report. If there's new information, would it be possible to put that in red, and then in two weeks, when it's no longer new, turn it back to black?
We can figure something out there. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Administrator Stevens, could you provide us an update on 311 North Fourth, please?
311 North Fourth, they have it tented, and actually, we have our building official here tonight, so we can get it straight from the source.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, 311 North Fourth is in the process. They've had some hurdles to cross. The weather was one of them. They can only work at certain times. But today, a lot of it came down. I can't take photos, because I can't get behind their screening right now. That's off limits, according to CD-PAG. But, it's in the works, and they hope to have it down within the next week we can have, if the weather holds out.
That's great news. Thank you so much, city building official. Also--
Thank you.
Also, for the benefit of the public, can we talk to why it's so important for, in what it's so significant about taking down 311 North Fourth Street?
The homeless had moved in there, and they had been living there, and they caught it on fire. It burned half of it down. They continued to live there, even though it was posted no trespassing, an occupiable space. They still proceeded to live there. In fact, the day before, Colorado Hazard Control showed up to start the abatement, the homeless caught it on fire again and burnt it another halfway down. So, it's very important not to have the abandoned structures around town, because the homeless seem to find them.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ryan this time? Okay. Well, then, I would like to move to Item 10A, and express a welcome and appreciation for Ashley Sack for being here to give us a presentation about the CU Economic Impact Study for Trails Systems.
Hello, and good evening. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Ashley Sack. I am the coordinator for Fremont Adventure Recreation, your friendly local trail building group. And I am, I'm very grateful, and we are grateful, and by we, I mean your community. I would just like to start by expressing our gratitude for your continued cooperation in creating outdoor recreation opportunities in the Royal Gorge region. We've had some tremendous successes in the last couple years together, to include things like Point Alta Vista. Raise your hand if you haven't done it yet. Oh, my goodness, you need to do it. It's incredible. I'll take you out there myself.
Next city council retreat.
Yeah, that's right. Royal Cascade, miles and miles of trail out at South Canyon. And all of these amenities are a tremendous opportunity for our residents who enjoy them on a daily basis. I know, because I'm out there and I see them and say hello. And also for our visitors. So, the visitors that Mayor Smith spoke about, we love having them come to our community to enjoy amenities like whitewater rafting, visiting the train, Jeep tours, you name it. They come for those things. They're now also starting to come for trails. And in turn, those visitors then shop downtown, they eat at our restaurants, they buy gas, and all of that contributes to our sales tax, which is, of course, great for our community in other ways. So, we would like to continue our relationship as we move forward in thinking about what's next for our community in outdoor recreation. And as your partner, we submitted on the behalf of our community a bid to the CU Masters of the Environment Program, Capstone Program, which pairs students who are completing their master's degree with companies and organizations who have a project related to outdoor recreation management and need it done for a lower cost than normally would be, normally it would be. So, a study like this would normally cost us tens of thousands of dollars. This is something that Rick and I talked about extensively, how this would benefit our community, to see how our investment is working for us. So, FAR has put out, through our 1% for Trails program and our amazing volunteer contributors, your investment as a city and your investment in our Parks Department, we want to see how that investment is now giving back to our community, and this impact study will do exactly that. So, I want to thank Rick also for helping me with this application. It was competitive. We had to submit a video, which was scary, but we did it. And we were selected as one of the products, projects. And without further ado, I would like to introduce you to the three Masters of the Environment students who will be working on this project. And we've already, they've done a tremendous amount of work already, so I'm very proud to introduce you to them. And they are Joshua Corning, who is the project lead, Eric Howard, and Nathan Warrior-Retlin, and I'll let them take it from here.
Awesome. Thank you, Ashley. Yeah, so, the three of us are so stoked to be here, and we've been down to Canyon City a couple times, and we're excited to venture down a good bit more this summer. But, I'm gonna sort of go over some background of what we're doing, and, you know, just a few minutes, and then hand it over to my partners, Eric and Nate, to get into more of what we're hoping to learn from you all today. But, yeah, so as Ashley mentioned, we are looking at a socioeconomic impact study of public trail systems in Fremont County. And if we hop to the next slide, just a quick introduction of the team. We have, as Ashley mentioned, the student team of me, Nathan, and Eric, and then we have an advisor from our CU system, and then Ashley is our point of contact. Looking forward to the next slide. The overall purpose, again, is to analyze what the impact of these trails are on Canyon City and Fremont County. So, looking at the next slide, we have our expected deliverables, which we hope to fully wrap this project up in November of 2023. So, the, kind of the flagship deliverable will be this extensive report that is looking into the community impact of trails that will be handed over. With that, we also will prepare a presentation slide deck and present to any groups that are interested in hearing what we have to say, as well as a simplified one-page graphic, and then an ArcGIS story map to be able to facilitate our findings in multiple different ways. And then, we will also have some internal deliverables that we'll hand over to FAR, including kind of our detailed methodology, justification for decisions, a lot of the raw data, and transcripts and those sort of things, so that this can hopefully be done down the lines. So, outdoor recreation can be measured over time with this as sort of the basis for that. And then, the next slide highlights that community trail report. I'm not going to get into details on all the deliverables, but we have looked into a lot of other somewhat similar reports, and are hoping to come up with something, maybe even a little bit better than those, that really applies to Canyon City. The next three slides, I believe, go over kind of the methodology. I won't bore you too much with those, but the big thing is that we will be conducting trail intercept surveys on three main trail systems. We will also be doing a community survey, both online and an intercept survey in town, as well as doing key informant interviews and some of those more long-form conversations to fill a narrative and kind of fill in the gaps on certain things. So, actually, we'll pop down to the scope slide, just kind of skipping through the methodology a little bit. Yep, there we go, and I'll hand it over to Eric to kind of jump into what impact of trails actually means.
Thank you, Josh, and thank you to city council for making some time for us this evening. We're really excited to get involved and, you know, get to know you folks and get to know the community down there. As Josh mentioned, we did review over 10 different similar studies that have been done in other areas of the country to kind of define what this impact of trails actually means, and how we might go about getting this report put together for all of you. That being said, we have chosen to focus more specifically on Canyon City, as opposed to the larger Fremont County area. That just kind of narrows in our results, and is generally where a lot of these trails are located anyways, as I'm sure you know. The goal of the intercept survey is really to kind of distinguish between visitors and community members. And, excuse me, with these intercept surveys, we'll be able to really tell what visitors and tourists are bringing into this community. We're planning to ask about what kind of money they're spending on, in the community while they're here, where they're staying, why they're coming, how big of an impact the trails had in their decision to come visit Canyon City. Then, again, with this community survey, really gauging the community interest in the trails, some time for feedback as to what these trails are doing for them, and how they would like to improve them, and where we could direct some of that focus in the future, or where you all could direct some of that focus in the future. And then, just hopefully, we can really get an idea of how this community can continue to build around outdoor recreation. And, yeah, and I believe that's kind of our scope at the moment. I'm going to hand it off to Nathan, who has a little bit more direction and some of our interest in hearing all of your thoughts as well.
Thanks, Eric and Josh. And thank you to the whole city council, again, for making time and space for us. We're really excited to be here, and our conversations with Ashley, as we have been narrowing down what this project could be for your community, it keeps coming back to that the focus of this is to provide data to the decision-makers that will be most impactful in demonstrating the value of trails, and also helping guide, you know, decision-making in the future as it relates to trails and outdoor recreation. So, as Josh and Eric mentioned, we have, we did this extensive literature review where we saw how other communities, some similar to Canyon City, some a little bit different in different ways, have conducted similar studies and used that data. And we have this big picture of all the different directions this study could go. And one of, what we've been doing before we really hit the ground running with our data collection, which is going to pick up in about June, is we want to make sure that how we design our study is tailored specifically to the needs of your community. We've been reaching out to stakeholders and conducting interviews, and really, one of the main motivations for us to join you today was to facilitate a conversation with city council, so that we could get your feedback on your priorities. And we were hoping to do that in two different ways. So, the first, shortly, is I have three open-ended questions that we would love to pose to you and get feedback on. And then, we also have a short survey that will help guide the specific questions that we are asking in our, in our community and trail user surveys. And we will share that with each of you, and would really appreciate your responses in helping us narrow down our scope. But, if, and then, we also will open up questions, space for questions for you all at the end here. But, if it's appropriate, I would love to just pose, one at a time, these kind of three questions, and just hear your thoughts on those. So, the first question is broadly, what data or information that you don't currently have, could you see use for regarding trail use, trail development, the impact of trails? Basically, what would you like most out of a report like this? Basically, what would you like most out of a report like this? What's, what's the data gaps that need, that could be filled by our team?
Not questions on the next slide as well.
So Council, please feel free just to speak up and have a more casual conversation and feedback.
That'd be great.
Just certainly to start with, just more information, and I'm speaking from a council member point of view, it may be that staff has some of this that I just don't know. But more information about who's using the trails, what, you know, are they local? Are they from out of town, age ranges? And then another piece, and maybe this is in your survey, but just curious as to what maybe doesn't work? Are there things that we don't have that we want to be sure to have in the future? Are there gaps in, and I'm just making this up, does there need to be more accessibility, for example? So I'll, I'll stop there.
I would say as well, first off, thank you so much for doing this work. It's really exciting to, to think about having some of these data gaps filled, and we're, we're really thrilled to be able to, to take advantage of CU Boulder's Capstone Project and are really appreciative of the time and effort that y'all are dedicating to this and also to Ashley and FAR's leadership on this particular project. I would echo Councilwoman Tracy's comments. I think having the information about who is coming on the trails, how many people are coming on the trails, why they're coming, is trail usage incidental to their coming to Canyon City for those who are out of town? Or are they coming specifically because of the trails? And then also, I don't know if this is feasible or not, but getting a sense, not just from the intersection of the people who are using the trails, but kind of the broader people who are visiting Canyon City. So understanding the data in that kind of overall visitor context. So whether or not the trails are driving them here, or whether they came for other reasons and then just happened to find themselves on the trails, I suppose. Similarly to what Emily mentioned, knowing what we don't have that people would like to see. So not just why they came, but are they going to come back? And kind of what, what do we not have that they would want to, to see? I would also say kind of the, the adventure guide that we have is absolutely phenomenal, if you have one. But are there data gaps around trails? Do people know what is there, or, you know, do they find themselves up at the campground and they're just kind of lost? I could talk for another hour, so I am going to stop.
Mayor Proton Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, and the, you know, ditto's to what everybody has said so far. But, you know, one of the things that I think that, that, that we as Council might be really interested in, or we as a city might be really interested in, are the opportunities for synergism. And that synergism, essentially the definition of synergism is one plus one is more than two. And where there's the opportunities for synergism with, with the trails in our community and other activities. And so that, that would be, seem to me, something that's, that's pretty important.
Ryan?
Yeah, I would like to second what Councilmember Schmisher said, but probably take it a step further in, you know, trying to discover how they learned about the trail system. So we could better inform our marketing for the future and how that information is being disseminated out to the user groups that are coming to utilize our trails.
Absolutely. And then also, and again, I don't know if this is feasible, but the return on investment. So for every dollar that we allocate into trail maintenance or into building new trails, what kind of return is, is coming back into our local economy, whether it's through the hotels or restaurants or downtown shopping, or what, what have you?
And I'd like to take those questions maybe even another step further in finding out for those people that are coming to visit Canyon City and are using our trails, maybe finding out what kind of restaurants and retail shops they like to patronize that, that we can maybe start looking to fill, you know, meet those needs? And if there's any other activities that they like to engage in when they are doing these outdoor activities that we don't have, that maybe we can start seeking and providing those. I do have a question though, and that is you had talked about, when you're doing these interviews, there's some that are online and some in person, so it's just going to be like a couple of days where you're going to be doing interviews at trailheads, is that right?
We are hoping, yeah, so I'll back up a little bit. And the different, the different types of surveys we're hoping to do inform basically different parts of this project. So through our trail intercept surveys, we're really focusing in on trying to get that data that some of you mentioned, which is who's using the trails, what's the demographic breakdown of who is using the trails? And then really specifically, how much money our visitor is bringing in to the community. That data point comes from the trail intercept surveys, and we are hoping to, we're working with Ashley to take advantage of the, you know, extensive and generous volunteer network that FAR has. And we'll hopefully be conducting these surveys as much as we possibly can over the course of the summer. It will depend a little bit on the resources available to us, but similar studies had hundreds of hours of volunteer time at trailheads. And really, the, the more data we can get, the better, the better that will be for us. The online surveys will be targeting a slightly different group. The online surveys will be trying to target the entire resident base of Canyon City or the entire visitor base of Canyon City. So whereas the trail intercept surveys give us data on trail users who either live in the, live in the area or visiting, the online surveys will give us a sense of impacts to residents as a whole, percentage of residents who use trails, percentage of visitors who use trails, that type of data.
All right. Has there also been any consideration, and I'm thinking of our, our business recruitment and some of their data capabilities, data gathering capabilities, of also doing maybe some geo-fencing of trailheads that can also use over a period of time, tracking who comes to our trailheads and then where they go afterwards and where they spend money and things like that?
There's a possibility to do that. We've tried to do that with the Buxton data when we had, when we were working with Buxton. And generally speaking, there wasn't enough activity at the trailheads. You can, you can geo-fence an entire trail system. And we've done that up at the Royal Gorge. The challenge there is you get all the drive-through traffic that's going to the bridges as well. So it's hard to discern where they're going, but it can happen. Yeah, we can, we can geo-fence the entire link, excuse me, oil well flats, trail system. That would be a pretty good marker, but it can be done. It's just at the trailheads, it's hard to get enough data there. I'm also a member of Strava Metro. Strava is an app that people use like myself to track their rides, and it tracks all of their activity, and it tracks how many people have been there, how many people have been there how many times in a year. And I'm going to share that with them as well to help kind of work through numbers of people at the trails. So Strava's an interesting way to do it because people are actually signing in when they're riding, or hiking, or running. So it's, it's actual real-time activity of what they're doing.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's amazing.
I had one question, and is there any way, and there's a lot of trail websites, different ones besides, I use Strava too, but there are other ones where people can learn more about recommendations for trail use all around, not just in Colorado, but around the country? And so is there going to be any portion of your survey that would look at people who possibly don't know about this area that are out there and, you know, if, and why they would, you know, might or might not choose to come here? Thank you.
I can speak to that, and then I'll open that up to Eric and Josh as well if they have thoughts. Surveying people that like aren't in the region is probably a little bit outside of the scope of work of what we are focusing on at the current time. However, I think some of the essence of that question is what we're hoping to capture through these online surveys of visitors in general. Like get a sense of how many of the people of the general tourist base to Canyon City actually know about the trails? Where did they find out about the trails? And I would imagine that some of, like I can see in the future, you know, it would be very interesting to have that data on someone is riding bikes in Fruta or Buena Vista, and do they know about Canyon City? We won't be able to tackle that in this summer, but I do think we'll be able to get on some of that data through looking at how familiar the tourist base in Canyon City is of the trails. Either of you guys have something to add?
Yeah, I would just totally reiterate what, what you said there, and then also, you know, appreciate your comment there. And that's definitely something that we will, will bring into that more broad online survey that can kind of gauge that as well.
I don't know if this would be appropriate or not, but I do have a little bit of a curiosity for parking for our trails. And right now, everything is free. We do have some added infrastructure that would be really nice to have, like at Red Canyon Park and potentially other parks. But there's going to be a point where maintenance of our trails is going to really be an issue of being able to really keep up with it. And what if there's a way to gauge maybe their willingness or the appetite for paying for parking for utilizing our trails? I don't, I don't know, it's just something that might be nice to know.
Yeah, that's a, if I may, I sorry, jump in. That's a, what you're talking about is called the pay-to-play model. And we've had conversations at a local level, a state level, a nationwide level. I think you remember Luis Benitez came down years ago, and he was a huge supporter of that model. So asking people to pay at a free amenity does invite some conflict of interest when you want people of all economic levels, all backgrounds, to engage in outdoor recreation activities because we try to keep them free. It, it does start creating some barriers. So we as a community would have to look at that and decide if we want to start creating those barriers, how low do we make? $2 to park, is that a barrier to some of our, our local community members, is it not? But the pay-to-play model is certainly being discussed on all levels of municipalities and governments and, and whatnot. So that's certainly something we can look at. Again, might be outside of the scope of this particular project. We only get these gentlemen for three months, and then they're going to graduate. So I consider this baseline data, I really do. This is an incredible opportunity for us. These gentlemen have put in so much work, and this is not necessarily their area of expertise. They have researched all those 10 different, you know, reports that they looked over, plus more. So I really consider this baseline data and all these questions that you're bringing up are fabulous questions. And even though they might be outside the scope of this particular project that ends in the fall, this data is meant not only to be potentially replicated in the future, but also it's buildable. So I would assume that if this is fantastic data, helps us make some great decisions in five years down the line, we need this done again. We bring in everything what we learned, questions we didn't have answered, and then we might have to pay an actual company to do a study of this size and get more data, better data throughout the whole year. I recognize as the Chairwoman of Fremont County Tourism Council, that I would like to have data for fall and winter and spring. And again, that's outside the literal timeline of this project. But in five years, when we come back to this and want to build on our baseline data, I absolutely would like those questions answered. So not that this doesn't, not that this project doesn't have its, you know, quote-unquote faults in some ways and might not answer all of our questions, they are excellent questions and should be answered in the future.
Thank you.
If I can jump in there real, real quick. The, the willingness to pay question that you asked will be addressed by us in at least a, at least in part. Willingness to pay is a really standard way of sort of putting an economic value on something that isn't actually bringing in money itself. So we'll be looking at how much money trail users are spending in the county, but willingness to pay models that through a variety of different methodologies, try to put a number to like how valuable is the resource in dollars, is definitely going to be a part of our study. And it can also be a part of a study to residents as well. You can look at it from both, both perspectives. One thing I would like to just open up, I guess draw our attention to our, our third question here, which is the, we've talked a lot, we've heard a lot about the questions you have for visitors, and I would just love to hear some feedback on what you would be interested in in terms of how, how the trails value residents of Canyon City, and how important that is to you. I'd say that a lot of the studies we've looked at, look at both of these questions, look at the economic value that tourists bring in, and they also look at either the quality of life or the impacts on desirability of a place to live to its residence. And the different reports prioritize those different aspects in different amounts. So one of the questions that we have just are, are working through is what types of questions we'll ask the different user groups and how, kind of where that priority will be. So I'd love to hear your thoughts on, on that.
I have a couple of things that I think would be really interesting to learn about residents. I'd love to know, for the residents that don't currently use the trails, why they don't, if it is an accessibility issue, if it's an information issue, if it's an interest issue. I'd also like to know what percentage of newly, new residents in Canyon moved here because of outdoor recreation or because of the trails specifically. I also think it would be really interesting to, to know about the quality of life issue with regard to how residents value the trail systems and value kind of the outdoor recreation here and what, what premium they place on that. Thanks.
And I agree with that. I'd like to see more, really like to see the, the feedback on the residents because, you know, that is, you know, that's who we're here to serve is, you know, the, the tourist industry is absolutely important to our economy, but the bottom line is we want to know what the impact is to our residents.
Yeah, I would just add, I think both is important. I don't know if I weigh one more important than the other, the impact on tourism and the tourist economy versus residents and their view. I, I just think both of those are really wonderful areas to get answers to. I do have another question, should I throw that out?
Sure.
Mayor, just, I'm not sure if this was said, if it was, I missed it, and this might be for Ashley Sack and for Rick Harmon. How is the interface, so to speak, with city staff and/or council going to be during this process? Or is this a Ryan question, or? In other words, will there be certain touchpoints or not? I'm not, don't know if there needs to be, but just wondering during the process how that looks.
Sure. Well, this is of course the first one. Well, I guess the first one would be when I approached Rick and said, is this something that you think we should do and will you help me? And so we've had that communication. The gentlemen have expressed interest in having communication with you throughout the whole process to include a meeting like this at the end, and possibly some sort of community outreach meeting where we, much like the PPORE meeting that we had out Pathfinder that I think some of you attended, similarly, we would present those results to you, to the community, to the FAR Board, et cetera. And you're also welcome to sign up as a volunteer for data collection, if you want.
I just wasn't sure if there was a need or a desire to have any kind of a checkpoint partway through, and maybe there's not.
We certainly can. Yeah, partway through would be right in the middle of summertime, we can come back or we can just submit a report to you. But yeah, we'll be doing a lot of data collection throughout the summer, and if there are other questions or queries that you have, we can certainly address them. You know where to find me.
And I've interviewed with Nathan already, so I would be more than happy to set something up in the future to, to keep them connected. They want to be connected. I mean, think it's, it's very important for them to get your feedback to guide their studies as well. So they're, we have been talking about this for a while, so they're pretty eager about this. This is a really nice thing that they're doing, and I think they're going to put a lot of effort into it, and they already have, but so far, well done.
That's great.
And I can't, I have to remind everybody that this, to me, this goes back to Jim Meisner's requests a long time ago. What are we getting out of the trails? What are we getting out of the trails? We'd never been able to show it, never been able to put money into it, but now we have an opportunity and received a grant to do it. So I think this is a huge step in the right direction in, in getting those answers. And I like the thought, the, the thought of getting data that can be actionable later on, and so we can keep generating this information and use it from a marketing perspective as well. It all comes around to marketing for me usually, so there's a lot of opportunity here.
Great. Are there, are there any other questions that you have for us?
I think that covers it unless Josh or Eric have anything to add. I would say the last thing we would love, swing back, is we have, we do have this very short survey, the QR code is up here on the screen, I don't know if that is accessible to you. We can also send you all a link. If you have not had the chance to fill this out yet, we would really appreciate it, and it will help, directly help us prioritize what types of questions.
what types of questions we ask in these surveys. Um, as I'm sure you all know, if you see a survey that's 20 pages long, you're not going to touch it. So, um, there's lots of great questions and we want to make sure we're focusing on the ones that are most useful to you all.
Great. Yeah, we were able to scan it, but if you could please email it to us as well, mostly because we do have more on our agenda tonight and we need to get to business. We have other people that we need to, to hear from today. Really appreciate having you here. We're really excited about this study and love having college students participate in local governments. It's awesome.
And this is not costing the city any money. This is a project that FAR has taken on. We've put some, uh, money towards it. So we are investing in this, um, project, but it has, it will not cost you any money other than me pulling Rick away to help me with videos every once in a while. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ashley, and thank you FAR. You guys really are transforming the quality of life for Canyon City and we appreciate all the work that all of you do. Anything final before we move on to the next agenda item? All right. Well, thanks. We'll look forward to hearing about your results and have fun in Canyon City this summer.
Thank you all so much.
I hope to see you. And Ashley, man, I sure would have loved to see that video, you, your video pitch.
No, we don't have to show that.
Sounds like a lot of fun. It's like, like trying to get onto Survivor or something.
We got the grand.
Okay, we have, um, just really want to say thank you for your patience. This has been a long meeting today. We're, I know you've traveled to be here. Thank you for being here in person. We'd like to invite for next discussion for the RFP for Canyon Connect Fiber to the Premise presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Much appreciated. Uh, I made a comment about how we've been working on the trail, uh, study for quite some time now. Not even, not even close to how long we've been working on this one. So, um, I'm sure you all remember a time when COVID came along. Make sure this is on. Uh, because that really was the beginning of this conversation. Uh, I'm going to go through, I've got some slides here that I will present and then I'll hand it over to Brian Shepherd from, uh, Visionary Communications. I'm not going to go through these in detail. These are from a, from a, a meeting we had with stakeholders, primarily the Fremont Connect Group that created a broadband study a bunch of years ago. Uh, there were about 50 people in that, in that, well, not 50 in that group, but we invited about 50 people here, uh, to talk about broadband and redundancy. And we had a number of meetings to, to figure this all out. Uh, so this is, this is taken from that. You all have copies, but in the interest of time, I'll just kind of scan through it. But this goes back to conversations Ryan and Brandy and Elijah and I started to have back in 2020 during COVID. Um, this really gives kind of a, a gap analysis of our needs from an economic development perspective on this slide. But a lot of this came about because of the need for, um, our businesses downtown to be able to generate revenue online when a lot of them were not able to do that. Plus you throw in, uh, a few instances where we had, had fiber cut on, on US 50 and it shut our businesses down, which is very expensive. There was a couple of days where we had one, um, ATM available on Main Street. Otherwise the businesses were opening their doors for people to walk in and remember that they were in business, but, um, it didn't go very well. So those types of circumstances create a need for infrastructure. And this type of infrastructure will help us fill these gaps. But, um, we've had a lot of need economically speaking. We've had a lack of growth over the last few years. Uh, data is huge and as well as broadband in general, as we all know. Uh, but this infrastructure improvement can really help us attract more industry and help our existing businesses generate more revenue by giving them reliable redundant broadband. Uh, so we have a lot of need in our community for, for this type of infrastructure. So the goals of this, taking into consideration our needs, our goals were to create primarily a truly redundant system, a truly redundant, as much as we could guarantee anyway, uh, fiber system, broadband system in our community that would not go down. Uh, by, by redundant, I mean having two backhaul sources of fiber coming into the community to create this ring so that if one gets cut, the other's still available. Um, the entire system probably cannot be truly redundant, but the idea is that we could create a redundant ring in around our community that could create the core fiber system for our community. So we wanted to have 100 over 100 megabit per second speeds because it's more than capable these days. It's not even asking a lot anymore. And if we can bring our community to that, we can help our residents compete for jobs. They can work remotely. They can be connected, uh, at good speeds and not have issues with that. Plus we were looking for a system that could get up to 10 gigabits at commercial or industrial sites that we would like to develop in the future. Now, we don't have a lot of industrial sites within the city limits of Canyon City. There's a few that could possibly be developed within this ring. Um, those are much different conversations that I'm still working on that, that will take a longer time. And we wanted a system that's future-proof, that can allow for growth, uh, and one that will also be allow, uh, excuse me, create more competition for broadband in our community. As we know, just as in with, with energy, we have not, we don't have too many other options for broadband. So we also wanted to make sure that our civic assets, this includes E911, Police Department, Fire Department, their systems are up and running all the time. So they don't have to rely on phone calls or anything else. Uh, so hopefully we'll be able to do that. We, we targeted that as well for this project. And then also the urban growth area, thinking about growth, uh, priority annexation area, potential industrial sites, as I mentioned. But down, down at the bottom, the needs of Fremont County's growth and also Florence. We tried, I tried early on in this conversation to bring in Florence into this and Mike Patterson and I talked about it a while ago. Um, and we all know what happened there. So the, the communication very abruptly ended with this. So we wanted to make sure that while we couldn't include them in a redundant ring around our community, that there would actually be capacity for Fremont County, Florence. And then we also talked to, to the, the, uh, communities south of Florence that were struggling with broadband as well. So. Geograp- geogra- excuse me, geographically redundant, future-proof, high-speed broadband internet connectivity to all residents and businesses in the greater Canyon City area through public-private partnership. That's the overall project view. Uh, this is from the RFPs. You have that. This is kind of how we, we figured this would work. We would, we would participate on the public side of creating the, the redundant ring in our community. That would be the redundancy. It would include, you know, all of, all of Canyon City would be inside of the ring. And then the private side of it would build out. So we were looking at using our ARPA funding as an incentive to bring in a provider or multiple providers if they could create partnerships. We were not limiting it to one provider. We were encouraging partnerships. Um, they would then be incentivized to build out a system to our community. We talked about whether we wanted to put money into and get additional grant money to do a municipal system. Uh, the city of Canyon City has really no interest in being in business of internet connectivity and broadband. There are providers out there who are experts. So it was much more preferable for us to incentivize the build out of a system. And, um, I won't go into detail about this because we are really short on time right now, but there are plenty of benefits, plenty of benefits that will come from this system. I consider this to be one of those types of in, infrastructure that it's not visible, but it can affect every single part of life. And we have an opportunity now to help our community compete with other communities, help our residents get Wi-Fi that they need, broadband that they need, uh, give them more opportunities to work remotely because we see a lot of that in our community. So a lot of opportunities to benefit our community here. This is what we picture as very squarely, um, the greater Canyon City area. We all know that Canyon City's boundaries are a little kiddywampus. They're all over the place. Um, and it's very difficult to say, well, all right, you can have, you can have fiber to your house, but you across the street cannot. And when it comes down to providers like Visionary, all the rest of them that, that, that submitted proposals, the city boundary doesn't mean anything. It's residences. It's households, households and businesses. So this was our picture for the greater Canyon City area. This is what we drew up, the green area as our guesstimation of what a good ring would look like. Elijah and I sat down and we looked at all the, the infrastructure, all the assets the city had, and we kind of drew out this rectangle. Um, and then we also wanted to make sure that we considered Dawson Ranch and also Formy Ranch over there because they are somewhat out of the core. And like I said before, we wanted this to be an open concept. Why didn't, actually didn't say this before. We are not the experts in this. The providers are the experts. So we left a very open-ended RFP. It actually kind of confused some people because they wanted a little more direction, but we didn't want to do that. We put out a framework and sent an RFP out there that basically said, you're the experts. This is our picture of what we would like to see, what we kind of think this could look like. Um, we ended up with, I think it, I don't remember what the numbers were, went out to 37. I think it was actually more than 37 companies that downloaded the, the RFP. Five submitted proposals. Two of them matched pretty well what we were looking at. Um, one wasn't a proposal at all. It was a letter that was, said we could work with anybody, if you find somebody else. One, one proposed more of us, public-private where we paid more like $12 million and they paid like $7 million. So they didn't hit the mark at all. So we settled on, um, this is the timeframe of some of the meetings we had and discussions, but we settled on interviewing two of them, Visionary Communications being one of them. And then what's the name of the other? Forgot the name. Vero, I always think of Verbo, but that's not right. Vero was another one, very similar proposals. Uh, we settled on Visionary Communications because they really hit the nail on the head. Um, and they are, they were already in the community. They already had staff here and are, were a part of our community. So the fact that they were here and very knowledgeable, they also worked with, uh, a project called Project Thor through their company named Mammoth Communications. Thor is a massive project in the western slopes for the most part. That was a multi-county project that they coordinated. Uh, so they're very, very capable of doing this. With that, I will hand it over to Brian, Brian Shepherd from Visionary Communications. There's three Bryans with Visionary Communications, so he's referred to as Shep.
Yes. Uh, so our CEO, my boss and myself are all named Brian. So it's kind of, it's an awkward issue. But, uh, Madam Mayor and City Council, uh, my name is Brian Shepherd. I'm the Vice President of Community Engagement for Visionary Broadband. Uh, and I just want to thank you first off for having us here and also compliment you and your staff, uh, for one, being so forward-looking in terms of the broadband issue, uh, and also having a top-quality staff that has really been great to work with during this process. Uh, we're very excited to be here and get this project rolling. Uh, this, I, I think I get questioned probably twice a week from our CEO, when are you guys going to finish Canyon City? When are we going to get Canyon City? So, uh, I think he'll be very, very excited if we can, uh, get the agreement put together. So first thing I want to do is introduce you to who is Visionary Broadband. Visionary, uh, we are based out of Gillette, Wyoming. And what we, what we do is essentially bring broadband to rural Rocky Mountain region. Our market is Wyoming, Montana and Colorado. And the towns we serve are usually small towns like Gillette, Red Lodge, uh, Butte, Gunnison, uh, Pagosa Springs, Walden. So areas that are really difficult to serve in rural communities. That's what we do. Uh, we don't serve big towns, big cities. Uh, Cheyenne and Casper are the biggest cities that we serve. So that's kind of big to us. Uh, we started in the nineties with a couple folks in their basement serving internet after their dial-up modems with all the screeches and squirrels that you used to hear back then. Uh, and basically our CEO currently, uh, Brian Worthing, uh, purchased the company around 2000 and basically said, let's, let's modernize this. And as DSL came in, uh, we shifted to DSL. Uh, and then as new technologies such as wireless came on, we shifted to wireless. And kind of our last shift, so to speak, that we're doing right now is we're shifting to fiber. So what we believe is that fiber is the future. Uh, we will continue to use all technologies where necessary. There are certain parts of our difficult areas to serve that wireless is the only way to do it. But our goal is to basically say as many of our customers that we can pass with fiber, we want to do that. So, you know, really the, the, what I want to get out of this is that we are a small company focused in the Rocky Mountains. Our motto is broadband built for the West. We understand, uh, the difficulties in building this terrain and we are committed to rural, small rural communities and bring partners with them. Uh, I'm actually leaving this meeting and heading up to Gunnison, which we're building out fiber to the home in Gunnison. Uh, so the residents of Gunnison and, and we're, we're working with the businesses. We're talking with, uh, the university there. So we really focus on being partners. So that's what I want, want to emphasize is that we're here with you, uh, in the long term and you're not going to be someone that's forgotten once we get this project done. So what is our project? So essentially what the RFP called for, uh, what we're calling Phase One is to build, as Rick said, a fiber ring and network through the entire city. Uh, there's approximately 30 nodes that our city owned, uh, that we will build to. And so we will build, uh, fiber and essentially lease back the city 24 strands of fiber through, through the entire ring. So the city will have access to those 24 strands of fiber to be able to use however you want to use, uh, and connect them, uh, to your, to your city areas. What that is called is a, uh, indefeasible right to use. It's 25-year lease. It's basically saying that as we build it, we'll put in probably 144 strands of fiber so that we can use them for other things, but those 24 are yours to use. At the end of that lease, you can choose to purchase them for a dollar if you would like. Uh, and so the money that you're using for, to, to, to build this upfront, it's essentially prepaying for that fiber and all the maintenance and everything. Uh, once the fiber is in, we maintain it. Uh, if there's a fiber cut, we will fix it. If something has to be moved, we will move it. Um, and we also have a mechanism in there that if you guys add a new building, let's say you add a new rec center and you come to us and say, hey, can we put the rec center on the ring? It wasn't there when we did this. Uh, basically we'll work with you as long as it's feasible. Uh, we'll essentially connect that rec center or whatever it is at cost. Uh, the, we'll just pass on the cost of materials and labor to you to hook that up. So this really allows you as the city to move forward and expand, uh, in addition. Uh, we will also be, be building what's called a carrier neutral location. And a carrier neutral location that really is, think of it as a meeting spot for telecommunication carriers. Uh, there's one down in Denver. It's, it's probably one of the biggest ones in the country and literally every communications carrier in the world, uh, it's, I mean, imagine just big racks of, of networking equipment and everyone from Google to CenturyLink to Comcast, to Spectrum, to everybody just have, comes and plugs in and that's where they meet. So a carrier neutral location essentially is a way for you guys to have a, a place where other telecommunications carriers can come in and say, hey, here's a place we can put our equipment. We can do business, whether it's a cell phone company that wants to come in and build out fiber to their cell towers. They can meet us at this, at this building. And it's essentially what we're promising to do is say, we're going to give pride, the same pricing to everybody. We're not going to discriminate whether they're large or small or, um, a wireless company or, or another fiber company. We'll, we'll establish a pricing to say, here's what the costs are to, to be in this building and we'll operate that on an equally, um, benefit for all entities. And then essentially, uh, we will, the agreement calls for you guys to receive 8% of any revenue that we receive from that carrier neutral location. It's really what it does is it, it, it makes it easier for other companies to come in and do business in Canyon City as well. Um, as I mentioned, we, we will handle the, we'll handle all the maintenance, uh, and we'll pay you the, the 8%. Now Phase Two, which I, I don't really want to call it Phase Two because really these phases will be in parallel. We'll get to that here in a minute, is building out fiber to the home for all the citizens of Canyon City. Now I'll caveat all, we probably will not be able to get to 100% of all addressable homes in the city, but our goal is to probably hit over 90% of the homes. And so what we'll do is once we build out this fiber ring, and actually before we build it out, as we're building it out, we will then build out fiber to the different neighborhoods and so forth. And so that, once we're done and a resident wants service from us, we then go hook their, their home up to our fiber network and they have fiber to the home and can get gigabit symmetrical speeds. So your citizens will have speeds better than I can get in Denver, Rick, uh, once we're done with that. Uh, in addition, uh, we're also working with Canyon City Schools. Uh, I met with the school district today to figure out how can we make sure that all of your students have connectivity. And what I will be working, uh, with Sean Cole from the, the district to make sure that the, the students that are low income and have difficulty, uh, with, uh, affording broadband can afford that and determining how, how many students we can reach. And we'll, as we grow out this network, we'll make sure that we can hit as many of those students as, as we can and work to get them connectivity. So, uh, the middle mile, kind of the ring, that's another term we call it, is middle mile. Uh, this is, this is the rendering. Uh, this is not the final design. This is based on, uh, as Rick said, kind of the, here's the areas we said, kind of the, here's the areas we generally need to go to, and here's the best path. So here's what the ring would look like. Again, this is, I can't speak specifically, but probably a hundred and forty-four strands of fiber. Again, you guys will have twenty-four strands of those to use however you wish. And as we build this, we will actually build them into your buildings. So we're, we'll, we'll go along the roads, and then we'll cut in and actually bring the fiber into the buildings that you guys specify. These are specified in the contract, the specific locations are all specified. And then as I, as I mentioned, we do have the mechanism to expand that in the future as you guys have additional needs. So our fiber to the home, again, this is just as initial drawing, you know, once we get the contract signed, we'll get our field team down here and spend days walking and really put together a final design. But that costs a lot of money, so we wanted to make sure that the agreement was in place before we spend that money to get a final design. So this is a, you know, essentially a quick down and dirty design of what a fiber to the home would look like. The blue being the main trunk lines, and the green, I'm colorblind by the way, if I, if, I'm just saying crazy colors, is, you know, basically the, the fiber lines to the neighborhood. This will be aerial and underground, which means we will use utility poles where possible to hang the fiber. It's a lot cheaper and a lot less invasive, but there are a lot of areas where we will be doing underground trenching through the city and boring. All that will be done to industry standards, and we'll work with your permitting units to make sure that we have all proper permits and authorizations for that.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
The, so you said aerial is cheaper and that would be preferred rather than underground. So as part of this, as part of this map, will you, will the city end up owning GIS locations of all the utility poles that you're proposing to use?
Yes, yeah, yep. Because we, we, we work with Black Hills, we, we worked with them before. So, we have all that data. So once we, once we finalize the design, we'll give you guys GIS design plans that show everything, it'll show exactly where. We've got underground, it'll go, it'll show where you're, we go into the street, it'll show where the handholds are. Handholds are the, the things you see on the side of the road, you know, that you can pop up, that basically where the fiber is spliced and kind of goes left and goes right. We will provide all of that final design to you, yes.
And, and let me just make sure I understood your answer, and that will include pole locations?
Yes.
Thank you.
Could I ask one follow-up question just on that?
Mm-hmm.
It's wonderful to hear that you all will also be doing the maintenance during the lifespan of the IRU. Will those plans be updated as things are maintained and as things change?
As changes, as we, as move this fiber from here to there? Yes, of course.
Okay. And you're, you'll share those with us as well?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Could I throw in a question at this point? I, I don't know if, if city staff or anyone can answer this, or I noticed in that earlier map with the boundary going down fairly far south and east, but not, I mean, there's still a fair amount of residential, I think, farther south than that, and then Town and Brookside. I just wondered if there was consideration to going a little bit farther south and east or not, and whether there are reasons we didn't look at that.
When we, when we, and feel free to chime in on this, when Elijah and I talked about the general location of a ring, it was really like, where would it make the most sense to connect a full ring? I mean, if you, we thought about Dawson Ranch because there's a lot of residences down there, and they're, you know, they're, they're high-end homes. But how do you connect then to the rest of the east side of Canyon City without creating this exorbitantly expensive project? So that, we just didn't even include it in our RFP considerations, just because geographically it's so far out of the, out of the ring loop, I guess you could say.
So, I, I think to answer that question, Councilmember Tracy, you know, we identified the locations where the city assets were and drew our ring around that. I think, you know, the, the area further south that you're referring to, ultimately I think that's a business decision that Visionary needs to make on whether or not they plan on serving that.
Got it. So that there theoretically could still be some service outside of the ring, it's just going to be, whether it makes sense.
There will be service outside.
Just to clarify, what you were seeing on the screen with the, the previous slide, the large blue ring, that's just, you know, your main back hall. So, when we initially discussed the design of this, one thing that we wanted to take into account was just a center road and everything out on the east side, because we have a lot of public safety institutions out there. So we wanted to make sure that the main ring that had some dual redundancy, geographically at least, was at least that far east.
Got it.
Yeah, this, this middle mile is essentially what you are contracting us to build with the payment that you'll be paying. So you, you, you can dictate what this looks like, whereas, I think as Ryan mentioned, you know, once we get this done and we start doing fiber to the home in the, in the neighborhoods, we will have to figure out what makes most sense from a cost perspective and, and to get to places. I will bring up an example, for, in Pagosa, we're working with them on different grant projects to extend to some of their, their areas that are outside of Pagosa, that, you know, seven, eight miles out, that are really expensive and that we really can't do economically, except for now there's some other federal grant programs for, that we can have access to. So that could be something that we look at in the future, is getting that down. We've worked with HOAs before that said, hey, we're willing to put in a little bit of money to help you get out here to these areas. So we're very open to working with different folks once we get the, the main network built.
Got it, thanks.
Ryan, I have a question for you. Does that include District One, or is that going to be outside of the service area?
District One should be covered.
It's hard to see.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to see. Up in the top left-hand corner, you see City Asset One.
Right.
That, that's moving up towards District One right there in that area. So, the maps that they have do show service to District One. And, you know, Brian, Brian mentioned earlier, you know, I think, you know, he, he mentioned ninety percent of, of households potentially within the city. We, we've had previous discussions, I, I think that ninety percent number is actually households within the school district, not necessarily within the city limits.
So, my concern is that I don't want us to exclude city residents from another utility. I just don't want to, I don't want to go there, especially District One. And so I, I just want, that's, that's one of my concerns, is that we're all taxpayers and we're all contributing to this, and it's wonderful what we're doing, but I just don't want any city residents excluded. And that goes for the city residents up in Dawson Ranch as well. So, I mean, that's kind of, like, we need to figure out how, if not financially, how we can make sure that this all happens, even if it's, if we look for grants or other avenues. I just want to make sure that that's part of our plan, long-term.
Yeah, yeah. Our, our goal is to try and get as, as many city residents, you know, folks who are within the city limits into this as possible, absolutely.
Thank you.
I guess one of the questions is, who are the ten, potential ten percent that wouldn't benefit from this?
They are, they, they would be, households, probably that would be a considerable expense to get to, like, they have to bore through granite, or, you know, and they may have to, they may have to work a relationship with the buy-sky to get microwave service out there. I know in the case of this, and Sean is here from the school district, I know in the case of the school district, there's students who live outside the city limits and they probably have to use microwave to get it out there. This, this is really more of a realistic representation of where the service can go now. I mean, once they get into engineering and they look at what it's going to take if they have, like I said, if they have to bore through a lot of granite, then that, there may have to be another way to do it. But, the hope is, and I honestly think we'll be able to get more than ninety percent of the residents in the greater Canyon City area, because most of them have lines going out to them.
Yes. Using my old electrical utility background, would I be safe in saying that the first graft is your transmission lines? And what you've got here is your distribution lines. And so basically, you're not going to have transmission to everybody, but from there, they're going to connect on and be able to expand it to the neighborhoods. Is that a fair way of assuming that we're looking at it?
That is an excellent, and we actually, you know, as I mentioned, we work with utilities. And most of these towns, they are key for us getting out there. So, as, as the utility company does new things, they bury new gas lines, that's the best thing about having the relationship with both you as the city and the utility, is as they are doing their new plans, we can, we can go with them. And like, for example, we're, we're going to hook up Marble, Colorado, we're building them out. It's been a challenge to them, we're working with Holy Cross, and as they replace the poles, we're, we're pushing things out there. So that's, that's one of the things we can do, is hit that first benchmark. And this isn't, this is not a, you know, build it and then it's done, this is a constantly evolving. We can augment with wireless, as I mentioned, we are still a wireless company, and it, in almost all of our territories, some of the outskirts, we still do wirelessly. As I mentioned, it just, and, but they get two, we can get two hundred meg download speeds wirelessly. So there could be a, a neighborhood that we say we can't get them with fiber, but what we can do is put up a small transmission pole. We can either, we can actually use existing poles as well, and we can hit them wirelessly until we can figure out how to get them with fiber. So, we have a lot of tools that we can use to make sure that we maximize. You know, and I will say that our investors as a company, you know, we, we have a large private equity firm that's investing in us, and the number one thing that we're held to is homes passed. That's basically, every month we have to say, how many homes did we pass? So we have a huge incentive to pass homes, which basically means getting passed a home so that we can then service that home. So, that, that, that's essentially what our business is about right now, is maximizing the number of homes that we can get with fiber. So some of the milestones and a rough timeline, so as soon as we can get the agreement finalized, then we will work with CDOT, the city, private landowners, Black Hills, to essentially figure out, okay, what rights of way do we need, what rights of way, you know, are easy, what are going to be a challenge, and put together our final design. As I mentioned, we'll have our, our full fiber team come down here, walk the city, look at it, and really put together our final design that we'll review with everybody and get that signed off on. And as soon as we can get that done, we could potentially build, start building as soon as October of this year. So that would be building the Phase One laterals. Now, we, just because of the permitting and working with Black Hills, we believe that the underground and the trenching will go faster than the aerial, given the fact that you guys can maintain, you guys have control of those permitting, whereas Black Hills, there's, it's a process. It's, it's not, it's not bad, it's just, it's a process we have to go through, and it takes a little more time. They have to go through and analyze every pole. So we have to basically tell them, here's the poles that we want to hang on, they go back, they make sure that the pole can handle it, they make, you know, sometimes we have to replace a pole or put a new pole in, it just takes a little bit of time. But even with that, we hope to be building by, by February of next year on the aerial side. Obviously, this is all weather-dependent, so we try to do as much from April through October as possible. November through, you know, April is kind of iffy, depending, but I, I think even here, you know, you, you guys have a pretty temperate climate down here when it comes to snow, so I don't foresee, it's not going to be nearly the challenge that Walden is, where we're still shoveling out snow to try to get fiber in. And as I mentioned, we will do this sequentially. So once we start, once we pass one of your assets, we can turn that up and that asset can be live. And as we get this ring going, we will then start going into neighborhoods and turning up neighborhoods on a rotating basis. So this is not, this isn't something that we build the first phase and then start building the second phase. We start building both of them simultaneously, because our goal is to be completely done with everything by 2025. And that means all restoration efforts, you know, fixing streets, that kind of thing, be done by 2025.
Can I jump in with a quick question here? When, when you get to that point where you're building out neighborhoods, are you, at that point or sometime before, making direct contact with household by household, to see who your customers are going to be?
Absolutely. Obviously, we have a full marketing team, so as we start, again, I'll use Gunnison as a reference, we had, we're, we turned up our first two zones about two months ago in Gunnison, and about three weeks before that, our, our marketing team was out there hanging things on doors, talking to folks. We do community, we, the local coffee shop is one of our customers, so we hold events where folks can come in and get a free cup of coffee, and, you know, we'll, we'll give them some information, and we just continue to roll that out as we build out.
And so they have opportunity for you to be their provider for the high fiber, or they do, they work through existing providers?
No, we will be the provider.
You will be the provider.
Yes, so essentially, we, we will be the provider to both businesses and residents. So that's, that's real, that's, that's the high-level summary of what this plan looks like. As I mentioned, we are very, very excited about this opportunity. We, as Rick said, we already have folks in this area, and we are really looking forward to expanding it, bringing in employees, and making this one of our hubs for Visionary, for our network, so.
Excellent.
And again, we do have Sean Cole here from the school system, if anybody has questions for him, he was kind enough to be here.
Sean, you've been here for the long haul, and I think providing fiber to our students is a pretty big deal, we'd love to hear from you as well.
Yeah, thank you for, for letting me speak. This is actually a really exciting opportunity. I've sat on the Fremont Connect Committee for years and talked about how we can move forward in a, in a community to be able to bring broadband fiber, high-speed fiber into our community. You know, the three major areas of broadband really hit the areas of your economy, your education, and healthcare. Those are the big, the, the big areas, especially the state has been looking at recently with a lot of the grants. And so, as far as the school district, we kind of piggybacked, I guess, a little bit off of this. We did place an addendum on the RFP. And so, we have a grant already in place, it's from the Connect Color, Connect, Connect Colorado Students Grant out of the state. And we've been kind of holding off, we started off working with Visionary a while back, looking at a wireless municipal system, and then working with Rick and Elijah, we found that there were some other opportunities, so we kind of took a step back. The school district has five hundred thousand dollars to put towards this, to be able to come to an agreement with Visionary, to be able to provide broadband internet services to low-income families as identified by the National School Lunch Program. And so that's, that's the goal that we have, and so we're hoping that through this, this is an additional, I guess you can, can you, I guess you can say like a bump in, in financial costs to be able to expand this program, as you saw the, the map with trying to get some of those connections to the home, we're hoping that that would also help provide some incentive to get that project going. We've, we've had, we've had that money for a couple years, sitting in the bank for a while, and just kind of, I know I've been bugging Rick and Elijah quite a bit on this, just saying, hey, what's going on, where are we at with this? But, yeah, we're real excited about this, and I, I think this is a really good opportunity. I think it's historic. I think it's a very big move for the, for the city of Canyon City to move to a, a system like this. Not very many communities have done this. And so, this, this is a very exciting opportunity, I think, for, for our community, so, yeah. So I would, I just want to thank you guys for, for taking the opportunity to, to listen to Brian and, and take the work that Rick and Elijah has done, because I think it's truly, truly monumental.
So just a quick question for you, from what you've seen tonight and before and in your conversations, this looks like it's going to fit with what you need, in other words, to, for the students that need this, that are low-income in your district.
Yes, yep. I, I think it's going to be a huge benefit, especially for students of low-income families that may be struggling trying to just simply pay for broadband in their homes. So, that's the goal that we have with the school district.
Great.
Yeah.
And to piggyback on that, Visionary does participate in the ACP program, it's a federal program that gives a subsidy for low-income families that qualify for free breakfast lunch, up to thirty dollars a month to do that, so Visionary does participate in that. And I think that's what Sean and I talked about this afternoon, was using the money to, you know, expand on that, push it, you know, can we push that farther, can we get the kids better service? You know, I was, I was actually just reading, you know, they're starting to come out with the articles about the, the pandemic's impact on education, you know, and, and besides the, the racial and socioeconomic lines, that kids with broadband was one of the key factors in, is the, do the kids, have they caught up yet, or are they still behind? Is, did they have access to good quality internet? So, with this, you know, your, your, the students in Canyon City will have access to as good as internet, if not better than the folks in Denver and the metropolitan area.
And then, and then the families themselves will have that access too, you know, when we talk about access to services, you know, health and safety is a big one, you know, telemedicine and things like that, gives those opportunities to those lower-income families outside of just the students. And so there's a broader picture with all of that that we're really looking at as well, so.
Thank you for being a partner in this exciting project. It is kind of a legacy investment, which was actually made possible by the federal government's American Rescue Plan Act funding, that the city chose to choose something that would be really significant in propelling us into the, the future and keeping up with, which is basically an essential need for daily living anymore.
Yeah.
Especially for business and for economic growth. And so as you say, for telehealth and for students' ability for having an excellent education. And so as you say, for telehealth and for students' ability for having an excellent education. So we appreciate that. Ryan, can you remind us how much money we will be spending on this legacy investment?
This is a million-dollar project.
And I'd like to chime in a little bit there too regarding the million-dollar investment. You know, Rick and Brian have spoken to kind of how monumental this is for the community, and just the, the business owners that we have in the community and what we've, we've needed for quite some time. It's also important to remember that the city will be gaining quite an asset out of this through the IRU as well, with the ability to, you know, have a $1 purchase at the end of this term. Owning our own municipal fiber for our own municipal network is, is huge. Tying all of our assets together, not having to rely on third-party internet services, not only saves the city money on month-to-month costs, but allows for quite a bit of expandability in our network and our cybersecurity endeavors as well. So it's kind of a two birds, one stone situation. We grow the community through this and also get ourselves quite an asset.
Thank you for that.
And just to add, Visionary's additional, you know, all of the, building out the neighborhoods with the fiber to the home is, we are paying for that. So the, the amount of money that is coming back into the community will be exponentially more times that based on our investment into the community.
Okay. We do have Councilmember Schmisher in the queue.
I just wanted to hear a little bit more about your rates in the communities that you're currently serving. How much does internet cost?
That's a fantastic question. So obviously, as I mentioned, our service area is quite disparate when you look at all the way from Red Lodge, Montana, down into Bayfield and close to the New Mexico border. So we've traditionally had a rate system that varies a lot, to be honest. One of the efforts of our company right now is to kind of zero that, not zero, but narrow it down so that we, we don't, you know, right now, we offer this community these speed tiers and this, and this community might be a little bit different. We want to get to the point where we, you know, across, you know, 95% of our markets, we have three or four service offerings and associated prices. So I, I think when you're looking at our, what, what our target, I think, for gigabit speeds is probably going to be anywhere in the $65 to $80 a month range for gigabit speeds. We'll have tiers above that if someone wants higher, and this is for residential. And then we'll have some tiers below that for people that don't want to spend that much, whether that's a 500-meg plan, a 100-meg plan, a 50-meg plan. That, we're kind of working out what that looks like. So we'll have that. But we, we realize we have to be competitive. You know, we have to be competitive with our competitor with CenturyLink and Spectrum here in Canyon City. So again, the market forces of business will dictate what we charge.
Great, thank you. That's really helpful. And I think I understood, Director, that it's free for the municipality for the life of the fiber, and that's part of, I mean, the leaseback is essentially, we are giving you the ARPA funds, and in exchange, we are getting the right to buy the system at the end of this term of 25 years for $1 and free.
So the, the IRU includes the fiber cable itself. It does not include the lit service. So that is something that is a separate internet cost to the city. But the communication path from building to building through our dark fiber would be free for us to own forever. So we won't need to have internet service in every one of our locations, but there will be still a lit services cost ongoing in the future.
Thank you so much for clarifying that. That's really, really helpful.
And I should add, one of the reasons we chose Visionary is because they propose lower rates than their competitor.
We do have Councilmember Tracy in the queue now.
Yeah, my, my question was, you're going to do the maintenance. Can you say a little bit more about what's that going to require of you as a company? How many people are there? Are they based here or are they based outside of Canyon City? Just say a little bit more about what that looks like.
Yeah, so maintenance, so hopefully maintenance is pretty minimal once we get it in. That's one of the, the positives about going underground is that unless someone cuts it, but obviously that does happen. I think we actually just, there was a fiber cut in Durango a couple of weeks ago. Took down the entire 160 corridor for about 10 hours because someone was fixing a CDOT pole and cut through a fiber. So those types of things, you know, as someone's building or you're doing some street work and you cut a fiber or you hit one of our boxes and knock it off, that's the kind of the daily maintenance that we have. Obviously, long-term, if you're moving a road, if you're building a new building somewhere, that we have to move or, you know, look at that, those types of assets. In terms of an ongoing maintenance from a customer perspective, yes, we will have installers here. We will have installers in the community that will come and do the actual installs. On most of our network, our, our network operations center is based out of Gillette, as, as is our customer service center. So that's also another benefit is that all customer service is a US-based, 24/7 right here in the region. So yes, we will have staff, we currently do have staff, and we will continue to have staff here in Canyon City and the surrounding area.
So one of the, one of the more frustrating and humorous, I guess you could say, at the same time, things throughout this project is working with the providers. We try, we started this project to try to figure out whether we could create redundancy in our community without doing this. You know, back in 2020, we talked about redundancy. We talked about needing broadband. In 2021, we met with all of the providers in the area, trying to figure out where their services were, where their lines were. Could we create redundancy? None of them would talk about their, about their locations, anything. While we were interviewing with Visionary, we learned that they pretty much know where all the lines are, so, you know. It's good to be us, I guess, in that case. But the meetings we had with the providers were just, they sat and listened. They didn't talk. They're very frustrating meetings. But humor is at the same time, so we're making progress.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Schmisher.
I just wanted to hear a little bit from our city attorney about what safeguards are in the contract with regard to the payment structure and with regard to ensuring that, A, it's completed after we give them $500,000 upfront and, in terms of the ring itself? And then B, what guarantees do we have that they will actually take it from that ring to the home?
So taking your last question first. So there's nothing in the agreement about taking it to the home. This is purely for the IRU and nothing beyond that. So it's beyond the scope of this agreement. The payment provisions are pretty straightforward. That's probably the simplest part of the contract, to be honest. And then what was your second question I missed?
So what safeguards are in the contract? As I understand it, the payment structure is we give them $500,000, they complete the ring, we give them the second $500,000. So I'd like to know what happens if we give them $500,000 and they don't complete the ring?
Well, we'd probably have to sue them to get back our money. I mean, ultimately, it'd be a breach of contract, so we'd have to sue them to do that.
Okay.
Hopefully, we won't, we won't get to that.
No, absolutely. But there are no other safeguards in the contract?
No, it's a typical contract. You breach the contract and, you know, the city would sue for damages and basically get its money back or anything else that it spent in order to do that.
Okay. I'm, I was a little bit surprised to read it structured in that way. I'm much more used to contracts that are structured in terms of you do X amount of work and then you receive payment for it. So I'm curious as to the, the thought process that went into structuring it in this fashion.
So that's really up to the city as a policy decision? That's what the parties negotiated? It's not really legally. We don't really have any issues with payment provisions, so it's really a policy question as to whether or not you're comfortable with that.
One of the reasons that this took us a while to get through is that, that very question, because we, Elijah and I in particular, sat many times, like, and with Ryan. How can we guarantee? We're talking about the ring, you know, how can we guarantee? And we brought it up to Brian Wagner, too, and I, and I know Brian has the same answer. And he alluded to it before. They, they're kind of graded on the build-out, you know. Having the ring doesn't do them any good. So they need to build it out or they fail, so to speak. But we struggled with that. I mean, we're not creating a municipal system. We're creating an incentive for them to build. But just based on the timeline of creation of the ring, we had no control over anything else beyond that. So it was more like us saying, finish it, you know? Unfortunately, finish it. How can you guarantee you're going to finish it, but?
I will say, Councilwoman, the, the ring, to build the ring is more than $1 million. So we will be investing our own money as well into just building the ring, not even talking about going fiber to the home. So if, if we were to get halfway through this and walk away, we're walking away with our, from our own money as well. So again, you know, from a business perspective, that's not a very smart way to make money, is to get a project halfway done, spend your own money, and then walk away. So that's, you know, that's the assurances I can give you is, as I mentioned, we're, we're doing this in multiple communities, and this is what we do. So we pick our communities very carefully. We don't, we've turned down communities for that very reason, in that it doesn't make sense for us. When we go to a community, we commit to it.
What made you decide that Canyon was a good fit?
When you look at the, the demographics of it, the fact that you are, I'll say, I'll say grossly underserved, but you're very underserved. For a community as dynamic as this is and as large as this is, to have the limited number of options you do and the quality of service and infrastructure is, this is why we come into these places, is because we say other folks haven't, haven't invested for years. And it makes sense for us to invest. So when you look at the size, the demographics, and what this community does in terms of industry, it, we are very excited for this.
Thank you.
Just to add a little bit, you know, it's not a contract surety, but you know, the, the fact that there's another public entity, being the school district, that has their own contract and their own wish for, for services that is piggybacking on this is another key factor in selecting Visionary. And I, I don't know that it assures us the ring is going to be built up, but it's, it's another piece of the puzzle.
Thank you. Any other further questions or discussion?
The, you guys don't have any interest in providing electricity, do you?
No.
Since you're working on the lines anyway.
I will reference the term "stay in your lane." We have our lane, we like our lane, we're very good at our lane, and we intend to stay in our lane, so.
Well, I'd love to entertain a motion to approve this contract. Councilmember Tracy.
You can correct me if I don't have the wording right, but I move that we authorize the city administrator's signature on an indefeasable right-of-use agreement with Visionary Broadband.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? A call of vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Councilmember Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Hammer?
Aye.
Excellent. Really looking forward to this partnership and for moving forward into the future of high-speed fiber for Canyon City.
Thank you all. This is a massively huge move for economic development. So thank you for the entire region.
Thank you, and we are very looking forward to being your partner.
Excellent. I want to make sure that the camera maybe didn't pick it up, but we've got a double thumbs up and a really big smile from Sean from the Canyon City School District. So it is really, really exciting. Excellent. Well, we're, we'll look forward to hearing more and seeing that things are going to be starting to happen pretty soon.
Thank you.
We do have one more item on the agenda. Item C, this is introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance Four, series of 2023, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Repealing Chapter 8.40 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings." This has gone to general government for quite a bit of review, but today's the day to start going into official votes to move this forward. Ryan?
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, so Ordinance Four is to repeal Chapter 8.4 from the city code. 8.4 references the 1994, sorry, dangerous abatement, or abatement of dangerous buildings. And you do at your desk, at, on the dais, there's some, been some revisions to Ordinance Number Four to also include the removal of some of that term, the Uniform Code for Abatement Dangerous Buildings from the definition of nuisance, as well as Number Seven, the Uniform Housing Code from the definition of nuisance as well. As we were doing our review, we found a couple of other areas where those references were called out. I do have a presentation here to, to go through some of the changes. Kathy, if you want to go ahead to the first slide. And Kathy also has both of these books. So the, the small book there, it's only 18 pages long. That, that is the one that we are going to be repealing. That's the image on the left here, so, you know, very generic. You know, again, that's from 1994. The image that you have on the right, it's much more condensed. Those pages are much larger. That's about a 50-page document of everything that is in the International Property Maintenance Code. The majority of everything that we're repealing is in Chapter One of, and there's two sections, Chapter One. But the majority of what we're repealing is already in Chapter One of the International Property and Maintenance Code. So I have this broken down by each of the chapters. So title and scope of the 1994 code has three sections. That is consolidated into Chapter One, Part One, of the International Property Maintenance Code. Chapter Two deals with enforcement. It has five sections. That is in Chapter One, Part Two of the IPMC, and covers all of the items that are listed here, going from everything from Department of Property Maintenance. It covers approval and violations, notice and orders, and so on. Chapter Three of the 1994 code has two sections, general and dangerous buildings. So those two sections are covered in Chapter One, Section 108, and Chapter Three, Section 103 of the IPMC. Chapter Two of the IPMC has additional definitions as well. And it goes into far more detail than what, what we have listed here. So just trying to call out that the IPMC is a much more detailed document. It, it has incorporated everything that is in the 1994 code, but this IPMC goes into far greater detail than what, what we currently have. And again, we've already adopted the IPMC. This is just the repeal of the redundant language of the 1994 code. Chapter Four covers notices and orders of the building official. This is covered in Chapter One, Part Two of the IPMC under Section 107. Chapter Five addresses appeals. The appeal process for the IPMC was designated during the adoption, and the Board of Adjustments actually acts as the Board of Appeals. And that is currently adopted as part of our UDC, so Chapter 17.10.010. So everything that, that we have outlined in our UDC for appeals applies to the IPMC provisions. Do you want to go ahead?
Just so I can just say one thing. So all your building codes actually have that same appeals process? So the International Property Maintenance Code isn't different in this? In this scenario, they all go to, appeals under any building code go to the Board of Adjustment through the UDC? So I just wanted to clarify that.
Nope. Thank you, Catherine. Please feel free to jump in. Chapter Six, Procedures for Conduct of Hearing Appeals. Again, this goes back to the same chapter in the UDC, Chapter 17, that Catherine just mentioned. Chapter Seven, Enforcement of the Order of the Building Official. This is incorporated into provisions in Title Eight. And Catherine, I don't know if you want to say a little bit more about that. Title Eight is our nuisance code. And this, this basically deems that if we have unsafe buildings, those are deemed nuisances.
Sure. So under, and this is true of, of your, all of your building codes, but in the International Property Maintenance Code, the violation of that code is deemed a nuisance. And so under the city's nuisance provisions in Title Eight, you can use the nuisance abatement process, which is the standard process we use for code violations, whether it's, you know, weeds or, or building violations or zoning violations. We, we use Title Eight. And so this is, kind of relates to what you have in front of you and the change to your ordinance. So this definite, this sheet that you have in front of you, I wanted to give it to, give you context of where these things are being removed from. So this is the definition of nuisance under Title Eight. And we'd remove any reference to the Uniform Dangerous, Abatement of Dangerous Building Code and the Uniform Housing Code, which you repealed, I think, back in 2018. But you'll see that six says, "Any activity, operation, condition, building, structure, place, premises, or thing having been declared a nuisance in any other chapter or section of this code," meaning the city of this code," meaning the city, the municipal code, "or in the Charter of Canyon City." So, that's very broad. So, if there's any section of the code where an activity is deemed a nuisance, we can use Title Eight in our abatement procedures to enforce that violation and deal with it, if we so choose.
Thank you. Chapter Eight of the 1994 code, performance of work of repair or demolition. This is covered in the IPMC under Chapter One, Part Two, under Section 110. And then, Chapter Nine, recovery costs or repair of demolition. Again, this goes back to Chapter 8.42.30, recovery of expenses of abatement. So, that is, again, referring back to our nuisance code. And that's in the event that we come in and do an abatement on a property. We then lean the property to make sure that the taxpayers have a way of recovering their tax dollars in the long run. And then, the very last section, IPMC, has additional content that's not included in the 1994 code, lighting, ventilation, occupancy limits, plumbing facilities and fixture requirements, mechanical and electrical requirements, fire safety requirements, and then has additional reference standards and general requirements. So, with that, I'd happy to take any questions. I think the big theme is, is that we do have everything from the 94 code is covered in the IPMC, and the IPMC is more robust than what we previously had.
All right, council. Any questions? Comments? Appreciate your work on this, absolutely. And if there are no questions or comments, I know we've covered this quite extensively, but Councilmember Tracy?
Question, and then I can make a motion, too, if we need. Do we have these slides yet? These are real helpful to kind of summarize.
I can, yes, they should be in your email. But if you don't have them, let me know, and I can forward them again.
I know, at first, when we talked about this, at least for me, because I'm a visual learner, at first, when we talked about it, I couldn't quite get what the overlap was or wasn't. But this is really helpful to have the detail. And on that, if you'd like, I could go ahead and make a motion.
Yes.
All right. I move that we approve Ordinance Number Four, series of 2023, on first reading.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote, please.
I missed two seconds of that. Kathy Worthington? Sorry. My apologies. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Councilmember Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. We are done with our agenda. Before I adjourn, I do want to say that one of the local school kids made some marigold seed paper that you can plant. If you're interested in having some, come and get some marigold papers you can plant, okay? With that, this meeting is adjourned.